Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of your village council. And Judy, I'd love it if you could call the roll.
Absolutely. How's?
I'm here.
Stokes. We have Stokes in yet. I do not see him yet. Krieger.
Yeah.
McQueen.
Here.
Brown.
Yes.
Thank you. Also present are manager, Jose Salmarone, Public Works Director Johnny Burns, Planning and Zoning Administrator Denise Swinger, and I believe Finance Director Matt Dillon. And I have no reason to expect that Kevin Stokes won't be here imminently. Also present is Village Solicitor Brian Parcells. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. And I was just scanning around. Do we have a Wordell Kirk? Anyone seeing him? Right. I am not so. Judy Hosway, are you seeing Wordell? Okay, so, well, we can always bring that swearing in a little bit later. And let's go ahead and get into announcements. And actually, I think we have Chris Hall here with us. Is that right? Hmm. All our early folks on the program. Hmm. Okay, well, let's hope that Chris comes on soon. And Hosway, why don't you start off with our announcement about Lawson Place?
Oh, thank you, Brian. We're excited to announce that we close on Lawson Place Apartments on Friday. It's it was an historic moment because the council, the administration, the community have taken a very bold move to preserving affordable housing. For me particularly, it's I feel it's a very proud moment, given that it's MLK Weekend. And Lawson Place have played a key role in below market rate rentals for individuals of all backgrounds, particularly African Americans. In the history that the Lawson Place has in our community is quite unique as it was started by Orlando and Lenora Brown to help to assist African Americans moving into the community. But it wasn't just for African Americans. It was open to everyone, but it has a deeply rooted history in our community, and it's certainly worth preserving. And I'm proud to be a part of that preservation work.
All right. Thank you very much, Hosway.
Sorry, Brian, one more thing. We will be working the next couple, couple of days and weeks on the plan for leasing the units, making urgent repairs to the to the property. So for the purposes of what what folks should know now that things will continue as they are in terms of the rents, the rents are staying the same for right now. We're working on getting all the urgent repairs done. That's the roof, some sanitary lines and a few other things. And we'll be making more announcements about what's ahead for Lawson Place.
All right. Thanks for that, Hosway. And, you know, I agree. It was a bold and important move around affordability, and affordability is something that the village has prioritized in our goals and values. And yeah, I wanted to give that one to you because Hosway brought that opportunity forward to council. And it's been really great to see that move forward. Lisa Krieger, I wonder if you want to talk about the great things that happened yesterday around Martin Luther King Junior Day?
Yeah, sure. It was it was a wonderful event, and I want to thank the three sixty-five project and their collaborators for their work on this event. It's not as it's not the same as it used to be when we could come together. But given that we couldn't, it was just so fantastic to begin with readings from the Antioch College Coretta Scott King Center. And in particular, I really appreciated hearing Coretta Scott King speak. I feel like, you know, she was she was a woman, woman with a man, not behind him. And so hearing her leadership and hearing her leadership as an Antiochian was really moving for me. I was one of the intrepid marchers out in the cold, and it was fantastic. We sang, we marched. Bomani was awesome, as always. Jamfi was there to urge us on with drumming. So even though it wasn't as big of a march as it sometimes is, you know, Yellow Springs was out there to represent. And then following up with a wonderful program. I love hearing from the youth. That was so great. And I'm glad that the World House Choir with pre-recording could participate. So I'm always proud to be part of Yellow Springs as we celebrate and honor MLK and know that we have a lot of work to do. But we show up. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. And yeah, it was great to be out there. And as Bomani pointed out, not as cold as past years. And yeah, the live streaming, I heard a lot of great feedback. And so again, we just want to thank the organizers, and it's great that the village can support this really important day of the year. I wanted to highlight something, and then I think Chris Hall entered the meeting. Saturday before last, we had some great activity from the Buckeye Trail Association. And they had the their chapter, the Miami Rivers Chapter, meeting both as a leadership team to talk about some of their projects moving forward. And also, there was something out at the Barrel Room, which just kind of highlights that, you know, when we bring people into town, they really support a lot of the the great activity that our local entrepreneurs are supporting. And in particular, they highlighted two things that I want to get on people's radar, and you'll be hearing more. One of those is Celebrate Trails Day, which is on April twenty-third. And we're hoping that if everyone does what they should and, you know, uses those masks and make sure that they're all up to date on their vaccinations, that by April, we can start feeling better about in-person events. And they also have a great plan for National Trails Day, which is the first Saturday in June, and that is to have potentially a two-day weekend event around trails in the community. And it's really exciting to see Mark Heiss and the rest of the team getting brainstorming about some of the things that we can do that will be great for villagers and also support our local businesses. So if I am correct, yes, I see Chris Hall. Chris, we're going to hand it over to you to talk about the amazing grant that you helped us secure and what the opportunities are for folks in the village.
Hi, Brian. Yes, I'm Chris Hall. I'm the program manager with Yellow Springs Home, Inc. I just wanted to share a brief update on the two hundred thousand dollar USDA Housing Preservation Grant that we received that'll be administered to benefit homeowners in Yellow Springs. Before I go any further, like I said, the grant's two hundred thousand dollars and an additional twelve thousand dollars from the Village of Yellow Springs really helped us secure that. It's a highly competitive grant. We receive nearly half the funding in the entire state. And one of the criteria that those grant applications is judged on are matching funds. So that twelve thousand dollars really went a tremendous, a really, really long way in helping us secure that additional two hundred thousand dollars in federal money. The grant will benefit homeowners in Yellow Springs. It's what's unique about this compared to some of the other grants that we've administered is age of the homeowner is not one of the factors taken into consideration. This is just strictly on household income. For reference, a one to four person household can earn up to thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and a four to eight person household can earn up to fifty thousand dollars. Those are based on the area medium income guidelines that USDA programs follow. Currently, we're having people sign up to on an interest list just to do some really baseline eligibility criteria, ensuring that they own their home, that they have an understanding of the income guidelines. That can be found on the Home, Inc. website, which is yshome.org. At the top, you'll see a number of dropdown boxes under the home buyers and homeowners. It's the top dropdown, which is the USDA interest list. I'll be reaching out to everybody who's completed that a little bit later this week, letting them know specifically when the full application will go live, which I anticipate that to be Monday. I highly encourage everybody to sign up early. One of the reasons that we're rolling it out this way is USDA requires that grants be funded in the order in which complete applications are received. So I want everybody to fill out that interest list early so that I can ensure everyone receives access to the application at exactly the same time, which I anticipate being Monday of next week. And if anybody didn't catch that or doesn't see it on our website, once again, yshome.org. Home buyers and homeowners, the top dropdown, USDA Home Repair Interest List. Or you can shoot me a quick email, chris@yshome.org. And I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to share a little bit more about the grant. We really are super excited to work with area homeowners on this deeply meaningful project and opportunity.
All right. Thank you so much, Chris, and thank you to the Y S Home, Inc. team. Yeah, I mean, you know, this is part of the way that we're able to do so much more in the village where we're able to secure those grants with a little bit of our own leverage, and it makes all the difference. I also want to highlight that I know that we're promoting this on the village Facebook page, and and we'll make sure to help get the word out. So thanks again, Chris.
Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.
All right. Take care. Are there any other announcements from council members or village team members? Okay, if not, then we're going to move into the consent agenda. We have two items. One are the minutes from our last meeting on January third. And then we also have the minutes from our January seventh Part One Council Retreat. And so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to make one change on the minutes of January seventh. Just remove my name. I wasn't at that meeting. Otherwise, good.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in. Well, so let's go ahead and call the roll, Judy, on the amended minutes.
Yes, Krieger.
Yeah.
Stokes.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
How's?
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next up is a review of our current agenda. And this is where, if there's anything that we need to add, delete, or modify, please let me know. Okay, sounds like we're good there, and we're probably going to have plenty on the agenda for this evening. So I'm going to shift it over to our new council vice president, Kevin Stokes, to review the petitions and communications.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, everyone. We have received several letters this week, as one might imagine. So I'm going to do my best to try to sort of group some of them together in a couple of categories. So first of all, the letters that we received in opposition to the PUD. Those letters came from Tim Baum, Hannah Elmary, Holly Hudson, John Hudson, Leah Samard, and please forgive me if I mispronounce anybody's names. Rachel and Ben Price, Brian Miller, Kim Lee, Leah, Molly Lundey, Dino Palata, Jeremiah Gaddy, Justin Herman, Brittany Baum, Patrick Lake, Brooke Oberinger, Jason Levek, Laura Curless, Janet Steiner, Belinda Stevens, Sandy Kaufes, Kendra Cipollini, Lindsay Burke, and John Search. Excuse me. Those letters we received in support of the PUD were from Kathy Adams, Celia Diamond, Patty Dallas, Lori Askelund, Chris Ostland, Christine, I'm sorry, Christine Ostland, and village resident Kevin Stokes. Additionally, we received letters from Mitzi Miller regarding sidewalk safety. Catherine Price with questions, two letters for questions regarding the PUD. Fritz and Maria Schermeyer. Actually, I just I missed them. They were in opposition to the PUD. Amy Wamsley with two letters with questions regarding the PUD. The mayor's clerk regarding the mayor's annual report. And a second set of letters regarding the mayor's monthly report. Connie Richardson with PUD concerns. Dirk Lackovich regarding comments on affordable. There were two letters from him. Lisa Abel in support of the PUD. Marshall Walgren regarding the stream and Kilbane environmental impact study concerns. Lynn Kramer regarding marketing of homes. Tony Laraquita regarding access to sixty to US sixty-eight for the PUD. Max Chrome regarding his disagreement with President House regarding the PUD. And Sarah Sinclair, amen, an open letter regarding her planning commission resignation. And if we've missed any, please forgive me. That was a bunch. We tried to get them out there in as expeditious manners as possible. And that's all I have regarding petitions and communications. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much, Kevin. I'll also just highlight, and I know our clerk Judy Kitner highlights this with folks as well. The deadline for our packet is the Thursday, five P M. before our meeting. We do our best to get things in after that, but anything that doesn't end up being in the packet and comes after that deadline will be in the next packet. All right. So we're going to move into our legislation. And first up is the second reading of Ordinance two thousand and twenty-one oh one. And Judy, we can read that in by title only.
All right. This is adopting flood damage recommendations from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, and we got a second from Lisa. All right, so I guess Hosway, do you want to just give us the update on what we're talking about here?
Yes, thank you, Brian. I'll be reen myself. Okay, we had questions on the on the matter, and we tried getting some of those responses, particularly the the red line and the updated maps. We were able to get some of the the maps. The red line document, because this is not a document that originated with us. We do not have the red line document. Brienne has made several attempts to acquire those red light documents, but we have not been successful. I think part of the challenge is is that these are regulations delivered by the state at the state level to the different municipalities and their standard across the municipalities. Brienne, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that. I wish we had a red line document, but we don't.
Right. The the biggest change is that we now have a building department again, so we are putting it back in the building standard section of the code because it's not just about zoning for floodplain regs. It's more about, you know, keeping structures out of the floodplain. So Denise and I did a memo to you that kind of showed the firms, and it's got the link firm being the abbreviation for floodplain map essentially. And there's also a hundred and eighty-page flood insurance study that that map is based on that shows you what the difference is between the two thousand and eleven Green County map and the one that's going to go into effect in March. And the the Green County wide flood insurance maps were put out for public commentary in two thousand and nineteen. So there was an open house in Xenia. I'm not sure how well it was publicized because it was before my time. But that's the major change that we're making as we are moving it from the zoning section to the to the building regulation section because it is a building regulation code.
Okay. Thank you both. And since this is a second reading, I'm going to open the public hearing. And are there any questions or comments from council members? All right. Any questions or comments from citizens? Okay, not seeing any. All right. So then I'm going to close the public hearing. And Judy, if you could call the roll, please.
Yes, Stokes.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Krieger?
Yeah.
How's?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the first reading of Ordinance two thousand and twenty-two oh two. And Judy, we can also read that in by title only.
All right, this is rezoning fifty-two point six five acres of property located north of East Hyde Road and west of Spalan Road to plan unit development residential PUDR and amending the zoning map, thereby approving the preliminary development plan.
All right. Can I get a motion?
I move. Second.
All right, we got a second from Brown. Thank you. Um, all right, so we are going to going to begin the discussion by reviewing, I think, a few of the key elements. And I guess what I want to say, just as we kick off what I think will be an extensive discussion. I will highlight that from the village's perspective, we understand that a lot of people are confused. And I think there are some obvious reasons why that is the case. We will be focusing on presenting accurate information, proper characterization of what is happening, and doing our best also to address the variety of things that have been brought up. And with that, I thought it was best if we start with our Planning and Zoning Administrator Denise Swinger to highlight just some of the key aspects of what we're looking at in terms of this PUD decision and also emphasizing anything that you would like, Denise, about how that compares to the current zoning.
Denise, you're muted.
So we have three residential districts in the zoning code, Residential A, which is low-density residential, which allows up to six units per acre. We have Residential B, which is moderate density, which allows up to eight units per acre. And Residential C, which is high-density, which allows up to fourteen units per acre. Now, the difference between those, they all have different setbacks in lock coverage requirements. But the main difference between them, RA, which is the low-density, which is primarily what you see in the south part of town, is all only allows for single-family dwellings. RB and RC, you can also have a mix of the housing types, such as duplexes, townhomes, what we call a single-family attached, and then multifamily apartment buildings. So that's the main difference between those residential districts. Now, within this property owned by Ober, there are a total of fifteen parcels, equalling out to that fifty-two point six five acres. And of this, approximately forty-one acres of the fifty-two are zoned for RA. So this is the zoning that only allows for single-family dwelling units up to six per acre. And then the other ten and a half acres are zoned PUD. And there's just under one acre that's zoned RC, which is the high-density. Now, the PUD, which stands for Plan Unit Development, is really, it's in the zoning code as an option for developers. for developers to permit flexibility in how the land is going to be developed. They, this can include a variety of options that they might have, such as the, the design, the layout, or types of structures that might be better suited for Yellow Springs. It could have other types of design elements as well. But the PUD regulations are in place to promote a higher quality of development than you would traditionally get in conventional zoning requirements that we have in our code. And so we want to ensure that it furthers the visions and goals of the comprehensive land use plan as well as the vision plan, Yellow Springs and Miami Township, which staff believes that this PUD as being proposed does. The, the PUD always has an underlying zoning. So of the PUDs that we have in the community, they may have an underlying zoning of I-1 for industrial or a residential type of zoning or, or a business zoning, but they always have some sort of underlying zoning. And then the, in order to do that, then the rules and regulations for each of these individual PUDs that you find around the community is really is a process of negotiation between the developer and the planning commission. Like, for example, Thistle Creek, rather than the traditional setbacks that we have for, with an underlying residential zone, that it was negotiated that the setbacks, instead of setbacks, it would be measured from like one roof, wherever one house puts their, wherever one lot, wherever the house sits on that lot, when another lot gets developed, it just has to ensure that the roof line from the one lot to the roof line of the other has at least a 15-foot separation. So obviously, they have to stay within their, their individual properties, but they didn't have the traditional type of setbacks. I think they also had like 90% lot coverage where, you know, the, the maximum lot coverage in our highest density is 50%. So now the 10-plus acres in this development, in this property owned by Ober, it doesn't have any underlying zoning that is in place. That was an ordinance in 1979, 1979-30, when that portion was rezoned to a PUD. The ordinance, the ordinance says that when there is a PUD zoning district designated by village council and doesn't have a petition or submission of plans by a private, private developer, you can allow either both residential or commercial light industrial lands as long as that's agreed upon with planning commission and council. Ober proposed a development with the underlying zoning across the, the PUD as RC. And the reason that that was done, it was actually proposed actually by staff because there is already an RC parcel there. So but in their, in the layout of their, of the property for the PUD, they are mainly doing the PUD for, in order to have a variety of housing. Because like I said, 41 acres out of the 52 is RA, which would only allow for single family. They could have the option of building different things on that one acre parcel that is RC. And then the PUD with no underlying zoning can be whatever. And but they're not asking for rezoning of that PUD with the RC zoning in place. As it stands, they're really just going for the lots really at an RA or even maybe an RB size. Most of the lots are 7,500 square feet. The, in the case of the duplexes, they're actually 9,100 square feet. But they, but they'll be able to separate those so they can be individually owned. And that would be for tax purposes with the Green County auditor. Let's see. Typically, when we have, you know, these, these developments that are around town, they're exempt from the typical requirements of the chapter and, and have to conform to whatever the prior approved development plan is. So when, so when you get a PUD from a zoning perspective, I don't go with, with the traditional zoning requirements that are in the code. I have to first look to see what was negotiated as far as setbacks and lot coverage. And then if there isn't anything in there specific to it, then that underlying zoning is what we use to allow for accessory structures, accessory dwelling units, additions that are added onto the house that exists. In the end, really what this means is this PUD, as proposed, will have 64 single family dwellings, 26 duplexes, with a total of 52 units with either two or three bedroom homes, 24 townhome units, a dedicated park with playground equipment, 1.75 acres for the village to develop affordable housing, and constructed wetlands area with conventional RA zoning, which is the other option that they can develop under. Their parallel plan shows 143 single family dwellings. So that's what we're looking at. You wouldn't have, they can, they would be allowed to pay a fee in lieu for the parkland because as, as long as there is a park within a half a mile. And it doesn't have to be a municipal park, it can just be an open to the public park, such as Glen Helen, which I believe is within a half a mile. And there won't be any affordable housing component. There won't be any constructive wetlands. And it'll just have the stormwater detention ponds. So that's, that's the difference between the two. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me.
Okay. Thanks, Denise. I think what I'm going to suggest is that we have kind of some other highlights, and then we will certainly open questions for council and then ultimately citizens as well. So thanks for that overview. Very helpful. And I thought that it was appropriate for our village solicitor Brienne Park to follow up. And I guess particularly Brienne, there's, we've seen a variety of videos, a variety of, of other sort of talking points around things that, and we see some of this on the screens, we can do better. And I would appreciate any sort of legal perspective about what can and can't be done.
Well, that's a very broad question, Brian. So a legal perspective about what can and can't be done. From a PUD perspective, the reason the village has a parallel plan requirement in the zoning code is because you know what will happen if you deny a planned unit development and it goes under the conventional zoning. That's why the parallel plan is required in the zoning code. So what can't be done is for council to deny any plans submitted under RA zoning for the portions that are currently zoned RA. And for the plan that's submitted as a parallel plan, even though it's an RA, council cannot force the developer to develop something more dense, for example, on the parcel that's zoned RC or the parcel that's already zoned a PUD. And the reason it can't force that is because single family development is a permitted use in RB and RC and the PUD as it was approved by council back in 1979. It said it could be residential or commercial. And single family is the lowest impact when you consider residential uses. So the developer has an expectation that council will follow its own code. And that's as far as the short summary of what legally can and can't be done. Council can't make general statements that it would deny the PUD because we can do better on the basis of something that's not actually in the code. That's pretty much all I can say on that topic.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit more about the proposals that we rezone some of these parcels and how that would work, given that?
The rezoning is restricted under 1280-03 of the code. The rezoning request has to be submitted by the property owner.
Okay.
It cannot be done by another individual. So any of these, these proposals that are being put forward by persons who are not in ownership of the property, council cannot consider.
Okay. And then maybe one other thing. Where does legal liability come into play with, for the village with some of these issues?
That is something that I would discuss in executive session with council because it would be attorney-client privilege and anticipation of litigation.
Okay. All right. Johnny Burns, like to hear a little bit more about infrastructure, since that's been a big issue.
Okay. Hey, Brian. I don't know if you can hear me. I'm in the car actually coming home from the wrestling tournament. So if I cut in and out, if I cut out, I'm about five minutes from the house. But infrastructure feeding the Ober property, we actually have a sanitation line running through that property, which dictates where the road would go. It was put in in the 1960s. It is a pretty deep sanitary. It has been root controlled. So that is already in place sanitary. We did get a letter from the EPA. My team and the village team has been working very hard and are doing our due diligence and at long-term planning, and we've been able to take it from 650,000 gallons a day down to 420,000 gallons a day. And we're still making headway, getting that number down to where it should be, finding all the I and I and taking care of that. So the EPA three years ago would have said no to this development, but they said, move forward. You have the capacity with the improvements. It's only going to get better. As far as water goes, we have a 12-inch main that comes from the water tower, from the water plant. If he's down, it's playing right there. It's a 12-inch line. On South Gate, it's actually a 6-inch line. So water at the plant, we're not even near the capacity that we could pump out. We actually can hold 2 million gallons on our water towers. And we hold about 350,000 gallons in our clear wells at the water plant at all times. So the water capacity is not an issue. And it will, they will be, Ober will be responsible for installing all of the infrastructure. Power-wise, when we had our study done by GPD, with the help of HAMP, we have actually reached out to Dayton Power and Light, who we actually buy our power on distribution from. And they assured us, I gave them the, if we were to develop all of the residential there and develop Cresco, we may have to do some things to feed some larger loads, but Dayton Power and Light has the capacity to feed us at this time. And we're actually reaching in and doing some more studies on how we can better improve our lines and the infrastructure for that facility, or not for the village, not for just that facility, but to make sure that we have the correct power through the village and maybe even split up the system for more reliability. And then as far as the other utilities, I know Vectrum would put gas back in them plants. And then the storm, that is part of the Ober development. They're actually taking on some of our liability from Randall and from Miami and Lisa that was actually dumped out into the field years ago and just left to run across the land. So they're actually building their detention pond a little larger to help the village out retain that water before it goes in such a stream by the ditch. So as far as infrastructure, I don't have any worries at all that the village team will be able to do it. As far as roadways, yeah, it's adding a little bit more roadway. But we have an awesome team. We can handle the snow plowing. The best thing is, is Brian, what's this thing? It's we're ahead of the game on this one because we can start maintaining it versus waiting 20 or 30 years and getting what is given to us. So we're going to be maintaining this infrastructure from the get-go, making sure the valves are turned, the hydrants are plus, making sure that the storm lines are being cleaned out, just being on top of things. And as far as the cul-de-sacs, I have asked Ober because I know cul-de-sacs and, and some of the areas are not good for winter time. But they have, I've actually requested and they have agreed to being able to have a certain area that we could be able to push snow in the winter time. That way it doesn't clog up people's driveways and it doesn't block people's mailboxes. And so they are listening to the concerns of the village staff.
Hi, Johnny. Thank you so much. And I think that is a nice segue into having our finance director, Matt Dillon, just talk a little bit about, we've worked on a benefit cost analysis, which, I mean, ultimately, the results are that, you know, the PUD versus going to the existing zoning, there's not a significant difference, but just some things I noticed from that work is the amount of property tax that we're pulling in each year with this development. And so, Matt, I think maybe just kind of highlighting the financial aspect of taking care of these assets or maintaining them, as Johnny mentioned, because I feel that property taxes is part of the way that, that we support that kind of activity. But Matt, if you'd like to say a few words.
Brian, I think, I think we lost Matt. So if you don't mind, I can jump in with some of the, the, the questions. I think from, to add on to Johnny's point, the utilities and how the utilities are supported, the ongoing operating, on operations cost are maintained by the fee structure, and that is the readiness for service charge. So as, as a part of everyone's utility bills, there's a readiness for service charge that's designed to support the ongoing operations and maintenance of those utility services, whether that's water or sewer. There's also a contribution that's made for operation and maintenance through the, the sales of the services, whether that's power. I think we've, we've covered power in the past. We, our current power cost is around nine cents a kilowatt hour, and it's sold to the customers, to residents, at 11 cents a kilowatt hour. And so the difference helps contribute to the ongoing operations and maintenance. Likewise, for water and sewer service. And I see Matt, Matt's come online. So Matt, if, if you want to jump on at any point.
You can go ahead, Hosway. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So the, the, so we have the readiness for service fees. We have the sales of the product, whether that's water, sewer service, or electricity. That's on utility side. And Johnny made, made an excellent point that this team, because we are starting from the beginning with this project, we are able to put in a maintenance plan early on to make sure that routine maintenance is done on the entire infrastructure system at the site, from sanitary to water lines to electric lines. That's a big difference from where we are in a lot of the other parts in town, where we were playing catch-up. The firm maintenance has been done. Sorry, there's been a lot of deferred maintenance. A little been done in a lot of our systems, so we're playing catch-up. And, and we've been really good, you know, just one of the things that Johnny highlighted was the reduction in sanitary flows, the reduction of 35%. That's a big accomplishment. So where, and the, the advantage of a new location is that we're able to get on top of operation, routine maintenance early on versus trying to catch up. So that's on the utility side. On the property taxes side, there are two things that will come about in this development. One is that the local government, the village government, that's we, we benefit from property taxes when it comes to new construction. So we get an additional property tax contribution. There are other tax levies that the tax contribution to those tax levies is a redistribution of the tax burden. So it expands the tax base. A lot of the six-rate levies will get a reduction in the effective tax rate. So by having more taxable property, it helps spread that tax burden across a larger property tax base. So that would affect some of the other taxing entities. So we'll, we'll get some of that property tax. There's an income tax piece to this. The income tax being that while the project is being constructed, we will benefit from an income tax contribution during the construction of the work. Once the work is completed, say, fires out, whether the PUD or the RA, we are entitled to a, a income tax contribution on a reciprocal tax structure. The residents of this community, whether a PUD or an RA, they would make the 1% tax contribution towards the school district. And that's And that's regardless of whether they just live here or work here or both. The village government only collects income tax on individuals that work in the village uh or collect the reciprocal tax um factor. So that's on the on the property tax side. On the on the other cost services, public safety, we believe that we can absorb the additional call volume with the resources that we have. Uh the team, Min and I, we've been discussing the various different models they are to estimate the additional plowing, uh the street cleaning and all the other the other services. We are still working through some of the numbers, but we expect that that as the the additional number of users come on, we're going to have some some additional costs, meaning which we already have capacity and infrastructure to support. Uh but we expect that based on the property tax revenue and utility revenue, that those additional services uh will be covered with the additional revenue that's coming in. Um we we will continue to get final numbers on on those different pricing models. We looked at what similar communities have done to get a quantifiable um economic impact uh reports on residential residential development. I've seen some of the the National Builder Association's uh reports. I'm also seeing reports from Local Builders Association. In fact, they the the Local Builders Association Group presented to the county uh and had presented to the um to the various building department, uh sorry, uh Builders Association and the and the Dayton. And they the reports have have been uh positive that from on two fronts. One, that residential development um is followed by commercial development. So the trend locally is that as communities have built that residential, they see an increase in commercial activity. So it builds uh it adds to the overall economy and that in the market in this region that the the in the revenue contributions to a community are higher than the overall cost to serve those communities. And we'll share two presentations that we receive from from the the those groups, the builder association groups. So we'll make those available to council and the next packet. So I expect that packet to be just as long as the one you received for this meeting.
All right. Well, we look forward to that because I believe Lisa Krieger highlighted that I think this one was eight hundred and sixty eight pages. So um yes, and uh we definitely want to have that information out there.
Matt, did I miss anything?
Matt, were you trying to unmute?
Yes, I was. No, I think you covered it fairly well, Hosway. Uh on the other hand, we we are looking at uh with the development and all funds increase of at least uh we're estimating around two hundred thousand dollars. And uh generally from the development, it's it's uh as Hosway indicated, we've got the margins built in for our cost of services being being offered and we're uh um from a financial perspective, would look forward to the new the new revenue. So that's really, that's really it from the finance perspective.
All right. Thanks, Hosway. Thanks, Matt. And I feel that there's one issue that's really kind of risen to the top and has uh created a lot of alarm for uh our community members. So I do want to briefly address this and then um and we'll see if there are further comments about it. And that is related to the alleged dump. And I guess in particular, um you know, some some videos that have showed some tires and some concrete slabs. Um and I'd like for either George or Greg to just kind of talk briefly about, because I know a lot of those videos are based on um information that you've gathered. And so if you could just briefly tell us what you've done and then what happens if there's actually some discovery around um there being toxic waste. I think at this point um what we're seeing is is maybe some tires and some other things that were uh deposited there. Not clear that there's any uh toxic waste. Um but George or Greg, if you want to just tell us a little bit about what what you've done and what would happen um once you get into the development stage.
Thanks, Brian. My name is Greg Smith. I'm with the Ober Companies. So what we did uh before we acquired this property was our own internal due diligence. Uh that included a number of studies. Um most notably was the environmental phase one report. That report um looked into any history of um pollution that may be on that site. It did not find any evidence of a municipal or private dump located on the property. Um did note a few items that needed to be removed and were removed by uh the previous property owner before Ober acquired the property. Um it also looked into the uh contamination issue with that report, including the studies that were done in the well monitoring and contacted the Ohio EPA on that monitoring. It found the groundwater underneath our property is you know, clean for residential development. Now, the particle levels that were identified are below um that required for single family or multifamily residential development. So we've completed those studies and we also did soil borings. The soil borings were done throughout the entire site, including the area on our aerial photos, which uh had previously pointed out by one of the residents is uh his opinion that that might have been a dump area. Those borings found that that area was uh consisted of loose topsoil. You know, bad fill, unplace fill. We were aware of that, been aware of it for over a year now. That uh topsoil will have to be excavated either in a basement or out from underneath the road into a way that can be sufficient soil if we place down those locations. We have no reason to believe that topsoil is anyway polluted. It is just topsoil. Um I also like to point out that these studies were not done for the village's sake. We provided into the village, but these studies were done for our own purposes before we acquired the property. So we did this due diligence to protect Ober to convince ourselves the property was suitable for residential development. We would not have acquired it if we believed or found a kind of dump or pollution that would not have allowed single family residential development to occur here. Um so we do not believe that there is any large municipal dump or any to that on the property and our due diligence is not suggested that there is. If by chance something is discovered in the course of developing this property, that becomes the developer's liability to remediate. So if in the event of digging a basement or putting in a sanitary sewer line, you know, we discover undesirable buried material, it is the developer's obligation to properly remove and dispose of that material. And uh that is not something that would fall on the village. If something is falling on us, it's a risk we take when we develop property. Again, we're comfortable with that risk because we have no evidence to suggest that anything is there. Um but you know, can't put a boring every inch of the property. So if something is found during the course of development, it is our obligation to properly remove and dispose of those items um that have been found.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Um so I think those were, I I think that's a good overview to kind of help us sort of get into the mindset of the next piece. And so at this point, um I'd like to invite uh council members to make any comments or ask any questions and then we will open it to the public. And Kevin, I'd I'd like you to start just to explain um that you are recused and why and what that means in this discussion.
Great, great. Thank you, Brian. Um so I am Kevin Stokes. I happen to be a member of Village Council, but in regard to this conversation, um because I live um about a tenth of a mile, less than a tenth of a mile from the over development. I live at the north, I'll call it the northern intersection of Southview and Spalan. Southview is a horseshoe shaped street. So there are two intersections to Spalan. Sarah Amend happens to be at one intersection and I'm at the other. Um and because of uh you know, potential uh financial ramifications uh of the development being put in place, um I recuse myself uh from my role as a village council member and only speak if at all as a private citizen uh because of the potential uh financial uh benefit or detriment uh to the property that I own, which is in such close proximity to the development. Um I did share a letter in the packet speaking as a um private citizen and I'll also I've also shared that letter with um the village news, with the Yellow Springs News, um sharing my perspective as a resident um and and a member of this neighborhood. Um but uh th- those are the reasons um I have uh spoken out in the past in my official capacity and uh received guidance from um from our attorney and from the uh Ohio uh Ethics Commission regarding uh the role that I play uh and comments I make in my official official capacity. So that being the case, I hereby uh recuse myself in my role as a councilperson for this discussion of the over development, but may have comments as a private citizen. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Um Mary Ann McQueen, would you like to uh comment or question next?
Yes, I do have some comments and a few uh questions. I also had hoped that uh staff would show the two options because I think that that's one of the things that gets people confused when we talk about the alternative plan. Um and I had asked for that. Um so I I don't need it before I talk, but um I'd like it if um Denise or Hosway or whomever could share their screen and show what the P U D site plan looks like. And if the P U D is not approved, what the Ober R A plan is. And uh there was a picture in the Yellow Springs News that did a good job, I think, of showing those two options, but uh at the last council meeting, the the R A plan was pretty fuzzy and it was difficult to see. So I'm hoping that that can happen in this meeting because I think that is a big source of concern and confusion. So, okay, I'm going to start. I'm going to time myself because I don't want to take too much time, but I do have a number of things to say. So um it was um uh proposed at uh the last council meeting that I should recuse myself from voting i- uh in this development if Home Inc. were involved because I had been associated with Home Inc. So I'm going to start with that. It is true. I was a founding board member of Home Inc. in nineteen ninety eight and was associated with Home Inc. until two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. Uh and I was the director of Home Inc. for about a decade. And I joined that group because of my deep concern about affordable housing in Yellow Springs. And through my work in that organization, I learned a lot about housing development in Yellow Springs because uh affordable housing development is like regular housing development, but more difficult. Uh I have uh checked with our solicitor, as I had with our previous solicitor to verify that uh there is not a conflict of interest uh in me voting on anything to do with Home Inc., given that I have not been associated with Home Inc. for over a decade. What I mean by that is I am not paid by Home Inc. I do not have any benefit plans from Home Inc. I'm not on the board of Home Inc., nor am I on a commission of Home Inc. I do uh contribute uh annually to Home Inc. as I do to the Glenn, to Council Land Trust, the Children Foundation, the Senior Center, uh Friends Care, Three Sixty Five, and some other local organizations. So um clearly, housing and particularly affordable housing has been a concern of mine. Uh well, really, ever since I lived here, I was only able to buy a duplex in my fifties um because I happened to have a friend who could buy it with me. So um I I understand and and I moved here uh fifty years ago and I rented a house and invited three Antioch students to live with me and we paid a hundred dollars a month, which meant my share was twenty five dollars a month. So I really get the difficulties that uh lower income and moderate income people have in this village and not in this village. Um it's a national issue. So when I got on council uh eight years ago, uh I was concerned about housing. I worked with Karen Wintrow to have the housing needs assessment done, which uh identified both that we need considerable uh amount of affordable housing for lower income people, housing for moderate income people and housing for upper income people, upper middle class people, including different kinds of housing types, including rental housing. Um while I was on council, I worked to help establish the Village Managers Housing Advisory Board, create worked on what could be a housing plan, a vision for housing and uh I have previous to when I was on council, worked on revising the zoning code and have this past year uh requested that staff uh uh work on revising our zoning further so that we have more opportunities to build different kinds of houses and houses more uh inexpensively. So I've I've really been listening to everything that the people who are opposed to the P U D uh and to this development have been saying. I'm trying to understand what the concerns are and the motivations behind the concerns because uh this development can't answer uh it it's not, I I don't believe that the this development that the fate of Yellow Springs hinges on this development. And at the same time, my sense is that there are people who do feel that way and clearly do feel that way strongly. So I take this very seriously. So the first concern I'd like to address is safety. And this is one of the reasons why I would like to have the plan uh so that people can see it, but I'll I will just um talk without the plan. Um oh, Hosway is going to share his screen. So I think, thank you, Hosway. Thank you very much. So I think that the the main safety concern is about pedestrians and cyclists and of course, probably children. And I think the main concern so far to date has been on the impact that this development will have on Spalan, which as you look at the site plan that Hosway has put up, Spalan is the road, the sort of parallel or the perpendicular road sort of, yes, right there. And then it goes straight up. Apparently, there have been concerns about the safety of Spalan. It has no sidewalks. It tends to be narrow. I think there maybe is only about one stop sign on it. There have been concerns about the safety before this development. And I take the safety concerns very seriously and clearly while some of the others' concerns are nebulous, this is a clear concern. How can we ensure that not only Spalan, but the other streets uh in this area are safe, especially for people who are not in cars? So I I want to look at the development itself because I've, if you look at the roads coming in and out, wh- where people would drive as they're leaving or coming into the development. And and to me, it appears that there are about thirty housing units in this proposed development that likely would or maybe come out to Spalan. The rest of the development, in other words, to our left, all of that and the parts of the development that are a little bit north of that bottom uh road would most likely go up out of South Gate and then out to sixty eight, or unless they were going to hide, if they were going south, they would go to Spalan and go on to hide. So from my looking at this, I am not seeing that, while it is a significant development, it's the biggest development probably we've had in Yellow Springs. I don't see that the impact is all going to be flowing out on Spalan. Nonetheless, as I said, I take that seriously. I believe that the village has an obligation to make sure that Spalan is safe. As we develop the Active Transportation Commission, I am going to recommend that that be our first priority, how we can make that area safe for pedestrians and cyclists. And I would suggest to Ober Ober as a goodwill gesture that they provide some money to help ensure that that happens. For example, two hundred thousand dollars. I'm making that as a suggestion that the village could use, Ober could be involved in this if they would choose, but that we could use with the residents in that area. but that we could use with the residents in that area to determine how how to best make that area safe. I also know that people have talked about having a road out to sixty-eight. Um, I suppose um Hosway could sort of show where that might occur. I have thought about that. I, clearly, it would be quite expensive to do that because there's no um nothing to defray that cost. I also do not believe that it would enhance the development, nor that it would um make that much difference in terms of the traffic flow. So I I am not trying to push for for that. Okay, next thing. I think one aspect that has been impacted uh about this development that has had some conversation, but not enough, I think, explicitly, is how Dave Chappelle, his property and his um vision and investments of Yellow Springs are impacting this discussion. So Dave Chappelle's home is, abuts this property. And I can certainly understand why he would be concerned about having the housing development up against his property. As someone who's quite well-known, uh he certainly wants his privacy and and safety. I believe that he had the opportunity to purchase the property, but you know, I'm I'm not sure about that. Regardless, I see that as a legitimate concern that he has. And I would encourage Ober and the village to work with Dave to see if there's some remedy so that he can be assured that his property is secure. Beyond that, it seems like there is a um concern that if this project moves forward, it would negatively impact Dave's vision for Yellow Springs. And I'm saying this because I'm not clear what that vision or plan is. But that seems to be part of the motivation, I think, from the group that has formed the Yellow Springs Community Action Group. And I know Max, whom I've been in some communication with, Max Crom has stated, has indicated that he wants to protect Dave's concerns as well as his own concerns. And I think that it would be important to understand more how will, how would this development negatively impact uh the investments that Dave is making, uh particularly in the downtown area? And then there is also the potential threat that Dave seems to have made of uh pulling out his investments. And and there have been some people who have responded to that. We had a letter in our packet worrying about that. So that, well, that certainly creates a vulnerability for the village and hopefully that that's not something that Dave would uh follow through on. But I think that that discussion needs to be uh, to the degree that that is impacted about impacting people's opposition to this development, I think that that needs to be clarified. Uh, sec- my next uh issue, environmental concerns. I've I've walked the property a couple times and I have to say that it's uh not exactly a vital environmental uh piece of uh land. The stream is uh more of a drainage ditch than a s- it's certainly not a natural stream. Perhaps at one point it was, but it's been channelized, the uh banks are eroding, and it begins uh out of Culvert off of uh South Gate. There's scrub trees around it, um as has been said and has Max Crumps has said, there's a lot of dirt dumped in that area. And it would appear that the dirt's been there for about fifty years. Um, the wetlands, the constructed wetlands that would come with this development would certainly enhance um and and the area as well as the the water flowing through that stream. And uh I would be very interested and excited to see what could be done to that whole stream to actually make it a vital uh waterway. I do have one concern uh about the area where the detention basin is at the very bottom uh southeastern section, because that is a wooded area. I wanna understand more about how that would be uh done and what, how how we could save the trees there to the extent that that could be done. So that is a concern for me. Okay, another issue that's been brought up is the aesthetics of the uh buildings, especially in the development. You know, we don't, we don't uh, everyone has their own aesthetics. These houses, that I probably wouldn't choose these houses. And I'm sure that there are a lot of people who wouldn't choose my house. I don't think it's uh makes good sense for us to try to judge the people who are gonna live in those houses by what we think the houses are gonna look like. I I don't think that is what we mean when we say Yellow Springs is a welcoming community. I do have concerns about the Homeowners Association and have spoken publicly about this a- and privately with Ober. And Ober has indicated that they are willing to work with the village on uh modifying uh some of the regulations that might traditionally be in Homeowners Association. What I'm thinking about, for example, uh, I'm very hopeful that this can be the first uh development in Yellow Springs and certainly in this area that is a native plant, native habitat um development. And that could mean that there could be people who wanna have much of their property in gardens, uh a prairie in their front yard, um whatever. I'm very concerned that we have, allow people to renativize their properties to the extent that they want to, as well as have accessory dwelling units, um uh workspaces, things like that. Okay, uh, one, another area of concern is, has been the impact on affordability. This project has never been uh touted as an affordable housing project. It it is not an affordable housing project. There is uh the area that's being donated uh would be donated uh almost two acres for affordable housing, um which could have twenty or more units, and that is great. The rest of the units are not, would not be affordable to low-income people. Some of the um duplexes would be, definitely be afforded affordable to moderate-income people. I think there is a lack of understanding about the whole housing market in general. It is very difficult to build a house with the land for under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's just the way it is. The only reason you can buy a house for less than that is because either the house is in poor condition or you're buying it in a disinvested area. So this isn't just a problem for this development or for Yellow Springs. It's a big problem for our country, and it certainly is a big problem for Yellow Springs. And it's something, as I indicated before, that I have been trying to work on and will continue to to work on. And um I'm not gonna go into our affordability needs, but we need apartments. That's what I think would be the first thing. And I have one suggestion in terms of this development. The only way that I think we can have apartments in Yellow Springs that are gonna work for moderate and lower-income people is to have investors who are willing to either provide no-interest loans or low-interest loans, or even make donations. Because to build an apartment at market rate, you have to charge market-rate rentals. And I think Greg Smith at Ober uh discussed that uh on the kind of apartments that they build with a thousand dollars, twelve-hundred-dollar rent, which I don't think most of us are considering when we think about uh rental units. So I would be very excited if Ober would consider building the townhouses in such a way that they could be uh used as rental units. And I will encourage those in Yellow Springs who are interest, interested to create an investment group, to purchase them and and rent them. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap this up. I know I've been taking some time. Um, I I'm aware that all of us love Yellow Springs. We all are concerned about Yellow Springs. And our concern about Yellow Springs, instead of bringing us together, seems to be uh dividing us. And uh I think we have different um stories that, stories that we are projecting onto this development. And I'm not saying that in a pejorative way at all. I'm saying for one person, this development is signifying one thing, and for another person, it's signifying another thing. But all of us want to be able to live here, I think. We all want to feel like this is our home. We all wanna feel like we are accepted here, that we can make a contribution and that when we're in need, that we can be supported. And I, I hope that that's something that we can hang on to that. You know, that that we all want that. And things are gonna change. Yellow Springs has changed in the fifty years that I've lived here. And I am not the twenty-seven-year-old woman that I was when I moved here either. So I'm, I'm finished. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mary Ann. Um, Hosway, while we're transitioning um to others, maybe this is a good time to share the uh the R A um option, uh or again, what it looks like under current zoning and um and then we can reference that as we go. Um, but I'm gonna uh next ask uh Carmen Lee if you'd like to make any comments or have any questions.
Um, yeah, the first comment kind of uh mirrors what Mary Ann said. This is not an affordable development. It cannot be. Uh, that's the bottom line. So I think that people need to understand that that's not the reality of this development. Whether the P U D goes through or not, it is not affordable. And it cannot be affordable as it is. That is something that is really important to me because, you know, we're huge proponents for affordability, of course. But the path to homeownership isn't just whether or not you have a place to purchase. It is financial literacy, whether or not you um have the credit score that will afford you, you know, a loan for a down payment. Um, knowledge of mortgage rates. There there are so many things, myriad things that have to do with uh affordability and and the path to homeownership. So this is not that development. Um, and the second thing I wanna kind of say is that, you know, y- in order, you would kind of have to have some historical knowledge about the things that took place in town, especially when it came or comes to industry, right? Um, we've had quite a few industries in town, um and employed a lot of people in town that did not do um the best for our community in regard to disposing of potentially hazardous waste, right? We didn't have the regulations. Um, and we lived in a time then where if you knew somebody, you could take your refuse there. Um, so there's that. The environmental study, you know, we we just heard the representative from Ober say that you can't do soil borings everywhere, of course. What's the depth? So we did a topsoil uh analysis. That's okay. But um there is a a criteria for depth when testing soil. Um, at what point do we find that there's something innocuous there or not? You know, and that's not in the topsoil layer. So there's that. Um, so I would ask from there, you know, there was, you know, soil borings and and soil analysis. Was any of that analysis done on the the part of the one-plus acres? It's gonna be um donated for, you know, the affordable housing piece. My first job was working for Greenpeace. Um, and I know that it's not in the best interest of developers um to disclose environmental, potential environmental hazards um all the time, especially when it has to do with disenfranchised groups or poor people. So that's, that's um the question I have is, where was the analysis done? To what depth? And specifically, was the analysis done on the piece of the property that's gonna be considered uh the 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 one-plus acres for affordability?
Okay, well, I think that's a great question to answer now. Um, Greg or George?
Sure, I can have to answer those questions. So uh everybody's get a perspective of the affordable housing piece. It was originally our intention to develop that. So that part of the property um in our earliest plans had housing just like the rest of the property that were gonna be developed by and for Ober customers. Um, so in the due diligence analysis, it was incorporated just like every other property out there. Um, the soil borings are typically done to a twenty-foot depth that is industry standard. They will go deeper in instances where they do not hit rock or some other solid substance. Or if they hit auger refusal at a shower, i.e. solid rock, they may not go to a full twenty-foot depth. Uh, if they hit a solid rock and they can't get through, they'll stop when they hit that rock and make that note. So that's typically what we're doing. Um, we've used the same geotech company for twenty years. In addition to doing the soil borings, they will send out the those borings to a lab and run the soil tests for any kind of uh pollution materials. Um, you know, they come back with a soil type for us. They give us a boring capacity of those soil types. Um, and all that is used to design foundations and basements. Uh, again, the area that's being donated to the village was similar in those soil types and areas and rock depth to the rest of the development. We did not by any means pick out a poor area of soil or contamination to donate. The logic between the area that was donated was actually uh something that was discussed as staff and council members and things as we were going over the plan and what area would best suit a small, little infill um affordable housing area and development. Um, certainly, um Ms. Brown is right. It was never our intention coming into this development to create a large affordable housing development. We were coming in with the intention to create a large market-rate housing development. Um, through the work of the village staff and the participating council members, we saw the need and the desire and made the donation of the affordable housing um component land as a free will donation. Um, there are no strings, no added benefit that Ober is receiving as part of that donation. There is no trade in density as part of that donation. It is a free will donation of property to try to assist the village in a goal that was clearly explained to us is incredibly needed and important. So that's the reason why that donation was incorporated as part of the P U D.
Okay, so I guess I wanna follow up with my question. Was there the, so was the soil analysis done on that piece of property specifically?
Yes, and well, it was done the whole property, including that part, yes.
How many borings?
I don't remember. I could, I'd be happy to provide the borings to the staff. Um, I I just honestly don't remember.
I guess, I guess the question is, how many and where? That's what I, that's what I
And and we don't, we don't um dictate to our anal, our advisor, our soil advisor, exactly where they drill them. Um, they do a random pattern. And to be honest, it was done over two years ago. And again, it was done with the idea that we would maintain and retain that property and develop it ourselves. So I I by no means dictated that there be more or less borings in that area. Um, and I'm happy to share with what was found and done with the village staff. Um, but uh, yeah, that was, it was at the time, part of our development.
Okay, uh Carmen, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, Lisa Krieger?
Hey, hi. Good evening, everyone. Um, so a couple of things. Um, I would like to echo what Mary Ann McQueen said about a focus on safety. Um, I also have been very closely listening to about a focus on safety. Um, I also have been very closely listening to and reading the concerns and do want to assure that there is safety for active transportation, for kids, for everyone coming in and out of this property. And I appreciate the request for some additional funding for that. Should that be something that comes forward in a motion? I think sidewalks are really important. I think whenever there's sidewalk, it improves the opportunity for people to, uh, walk and run and kids for bicycling and to bicycle more safely. My primary concerns at this point, I feel like I understand what the two options are on the table with a PUD and without a PUD. And what I see is that with a PUD, uh, we do fulfill our goal to have a broader range of housing types. And I appreciate that there's also a park and I appreciate the opportunity to have some small infill of affordable housing. My concerns going forward are primarily environmental. The first one that I would bring forward is kind of an OR statement. And that was that, um, under RC 3734 dot 19, that the village should request the Ohio EPA to survey the land. And so that we have confidence there. Or if not, we would want Ober to pay for a phase two environmental assessment for the full parcel. Um, I'm concerned about these ideas about, you know, dumping. And I also, I, I don't think, I, I, I'm not really saying like anybody's lying or anybody's covering things up. But people did sketchy stuff, you know? I mean, they're just, people didn't pay attention. And I really, really think we need to know for the whole parcel. Um, then, um, I'm concerned about a couple of additional things. Um, uh, to the point about the HOA, you know, I asked a question at the last meeting and I was like, HOAs aren't Yellow Springs. And then people were like, yeah, but here's all the HOAs we have. Okay, cool. But what, okay, I get that. One of the things that I really think that would be great though is, um, to Mary Ann, echo Mary Ann's point is that if we have an HOA, let's make a cool HOA. Like let's have the HOA embrace our values and things like incorporating recommended, recommended landscapes and natural landscapes. Like if we're going to have an HOA, let's not have it be like, these are the four colors of beige that you can have. Like let's make it embody what we want it to be in terms of landscaping and that sort of thing. So that would mean that there would be recommended vegetative species. And we, we definitely are able to do that, um, within existing subdivision recs. Then there's two other water related, uh, recommendations that I would make that are also supported by existing subdivision recs. Um, one would be that the stormwater detention would be built right away during the first phase to minimize kind of runoff issues. We all know, I mean, I believe in what we're hearing. It's the biggest problem we're going to have here is an abundance of a natural resource that other parts of the country are suffering without, and that's water. We're going to have too much water. So I think we really have to get that stormwater detention system in right away. And then we hear about the stream. We hear about the stream as being an impediment to, uh, trying to plug in a possible length of 68. We hear about the idea that we want to preserve the stream. Okay. Then let's go all in on that stream and let's be sure that we're making it truly vital and that it's protected from construction runoff by current best practices. And that we don't just give lip service to protecting that stream, but that we do protect that stream. And those are the things that are really important to me going forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. And, um, you know, I think that's a good transition into citizen comments. Um, I believe that most of the issues, um, have been covered by others. So I'll, um, make any follow-up comments, uh, once we hear from citizens. But I think it is good to identify that, um, while there are some exciting things that could happen if someone else owned the property potentially, we are ultimately, and I think several folks highlighted this at the town hall, we are looking at a with PUD, without PUD. And, um, there's been a lot of legal explanation. We can follow up on that about what the limits are, um, what the parameters are, um, within what we are looking at and deciding. Um, so I'm just going to mention, uh, in particular with citizen comments, um, we have zero tolerance for personal attacks. And, um, uh, I heard at least one of those at the town hall meeting, um, I will immediately mute someone if, if that's the approach they're taking. And that is well documented in our council rules and, uh, procedures. And otherwise, um, Judy, do you want to just highlight any other things that, um, that are important for capturing this in the minutes?
Yeah, we, we actually have something in council rules and procedures and we, we tend not to be super, uh, heavy-handed in enforcing it, but I think it's pretty important. We have so many folks speaking and we do, we do ask that people state their village affiliation so that and when I do the minutes, I have some notion of, are you speaking as a business owner, homeowner? You know, someone who comes here as a, as a visitor. So the village affiliation is useful and first and last names very clearly pleased. So I can make sure I've got them correctly in the minutes. And I think that's it. Brian, are we, are we doing two minutes or three minutes? Cause I will be timekeeping.
Um, so what I'm going to say is, uh, you know, with a lot of folks wanting to speak, um, try to be succinct. And keep in mind that, um, council does not vote on who speaks the most on a position. Because we know there are a lot of villagers, uh, that are interested and, and may not be at this meeting or speaking today. Um, but I think it's important to keep in mind that, um, it, it's not necessary to repeat the same comment. So add to the discussion, but be mindful that, we're already an hour and 10 minutes into this discussion and we expected that we would need a lot of time. But, uh, but, but do we be respectful, respectful of that? Um, so, uh, so Judy, we'll start with three minutes and then we'll, uh, we'll see where we go from there. And, um, I am going to begin with, uh, Dino. And you should be able to unmute.
Hey, thanks for putting me out first.
Sure.
Yeah. Um, okay. Where I'm coming from is simply this. I think there's been a misconception of the, of what the opposition has been towards the PUD. Uh, under no uncertain terms has anyone said to deny Ober the right to build on their own property. Uh, this misinformation has been absolutely nothing to do with denying Ober the right to build on their own property. What has been stated is that the PUD in its current form, that's important, in its current form should be denied on its merits. With respect to the comprehensive land use plan and the core values and the goals of the village, it does not take into account affordable housing on a large scale. We've discussed that. This is the village's opportunity to ask for items they may not usually get from developer. The developer has asked for a PUD. And it's in the village's best interest to negotiate any way they see fit. And if that's an affordable housing package on a large scale, then so be it. Other than the mixed housing products, products that Ober is, uh, providing, there is no true diversity in this PUD as it stands. In fact, this PUD will have the exact opposite effect. It's going to dilute the diversity of Yellow Springs with respect to home prices, the potential buyers coming to you and, and the potential buyers coming to Yellow Springs. Again, per the, uh, the Bowen study, $225,000 is the threshold for high versus low end housing. And that one of these Ober products hits that low end mark. Again, as you've discussed, one half of one double starts at $250,000 to $350,000. Let's make no mistake, this PUD caters to bid in high income households, as has been stated, and does not include low income households in any meaningful way. Again, as I stated earlier last week, affordable housing does not necessarily mean affordable homes. There are other better products available to meet that need. Therefore, what I'm saying is this PUD should be denied on its face. Both parties should come back to the table, renegotiate a plan with transparency. This plan should include a large scale affordable housing complex to meet our core values and goals as set out by you, the village council and the administrative body. One last thought about this. Will Ober, if PD comes through, will Ober be bidding on the RFP for the 1.8 acres? If so, does that mean that they're capable of building affordable housing complex? That's for you guys to discuss. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dino. Uh, I'm going to have, uh, Felicia Mike on next. Are you there, Felicia? Okay. There you go. All right.
Um, I first of all, wanted to say, and I'll go quick as I can, that, um, anything or anyone impacting the infrastructure, it's always good news to hear that they're in communication with the maintenance team and the village engineers who will be in charge of all that stuff. So I'm really happy about that. I also really like how protective we are, all, all are. I had to go get an extension cord, um, about our village. I really appreciate that. About the water uses reduction, um, I'd like to know what changed. That's an incomprehensive report. Like what changed? Like all of a sudden it's less, less, less. What's that mean? Um, about DP and L assurance, that utilities mark, I didn't hear that well. I know we've had brownouts in the summer. I know we've had no heat in the winter because DP and L was not able to meet the demand already. So I'm not sure about that assurance. I do not feel assured. Um, I know in the wintertime, had to bring logs over, had to start the fire, heat the house over on Omar with a fireplace. Um, that's not an assurance for me. Uh, with the tax revenue piece, hmm, so the, the objective would be that the revenue would offset the cost per resident. Like per resident, there's a cost to maintaining a village and the idea is that the tax revenue would offset that cost. Um, that's a lot of kids and each one of them will need a teacher. How does that impact classroom size? And then those kids will want athletics. I remember football in the eighties. We don't have football anymore. All of these things have costs. You know, when these kids get here, then these people are going to be like, hey, you guys don't have a football team. And you don't have any AP and how are our kids going to get into college? Those are going to be costs. That's a per head cost. So just this taxes offset everything is not numbers, though I do see that it sounds good. Let's see, about the environmental toxins, I wish I could go in order, but it's just a lot of people want to speak. About the environmental toxins, there's either stuff there or there's not. One person says they know exactly where the stuff is. Is the stuff like the stuff that we had to bury over on Dayton Street? Or is it not like that stuff? Or who had enough friends to bury some stuff on some random land in 77 slash 79? Is there stuff or not? Can we walk over there and see where the stuff not stuff is? Is it glow in the dark stuff? Does it stink? What is that about? I don't want to go into the depths and the number of holes or any of that. It's real straight. There's either stuff or there ain't stuff. Dumping, not
And that three minutes and Felicia, can I get your last name and your association with the village?
Felicia Chappelle standing in opposition. Thanks, Judy.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thanks, Felicia. Um, Judith Hemflin.
Brian. Brian.
You're on. Go ahead.
Okay. Sorry. Couldn't tell. All right. Oops. Sorry. My, I hope I'm still on there. Um, so I guess I want to first thank, uh, staff and the village council, uh, members, uh, for just how thorough you've been. It's been awesomely awesome. Uh, it seems to me there's been a lot of confusion amongst those who are against the PUD. It seems that way to me in regards to affordable housing. But I will say, and it seems to be pretty clear, uh, from what Denise said. And I hopefully people understand it will be developed one way or the other. It will either be RA or it will be the PUD. Um, when I was on council for 11 years, I was a big supporter of affordable housing. I went to Columbus and advocated for funding for affordable housing in our village. I feel like I know a fair amount about affordable housing. And there's a lot that's being said about it that to me is inaccurate. That there could be 24 to 28 units uh, in the PUD. That's almost 20%. It is significant. And, um, that, that some of the market rates are going to be, uh, smaller units is also significant. It's going to make it easier for some people buying affordable units to be able to afford those, um, duplexes and townhouses. Can't quite tell what's happening with my screen. I want to say I talked to several people who are living in current affordable housing in the village. They are Yellow Springers and they are people we all know. They are people like Clean Jean, uh, DJ and Music Lover. Two people who worked, who have worked at Friends Care Center, taking care of our elders for many years, at a very modest income. Um, persons of color, children, uh, the affordable housing that has been developed in the village is housing people of the village. Um, I also wanted to say, um, I appreciate that our council has been elected because they support affordable housing. That is part of, was part of their campaign that they were for it. They have a goals that they are for affordable housing. We elected them, the majority of us did. And the majority and many of us did so because that was one of their important goals. So the fact that there is a well organized, uh, group mostly from the neighborhood, uh, who are against this, uh, PUD, I don't understand it. Many of them sound like they are for affordable housing, but in fact, they are voting if they're, if they're for RA housing. They're in fact, uh, against affordable housing of about 20% of the units of that, uh, new development. I think it's significant. And I
Gee, that's three minutes.
Okay. Awesome.
And can you quickly, your village affiliation? I'm just trying to
Oh, uh, I live here. I've been a resident for 25 years, I would say, something like that. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Judith. Um, all right. Lindsay Burke.
Hello. Um, thank you, everyone. Uh, can, can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, I wanted to speak to a couple of things, uh, tonight. First, um, to Judith's point, we're not confused about the affordable housing, um, segment. What, what we recognize, uh, which was spoken to earlier is that this isn't actually an affordable housing, uh, development. It's been sold to us that way as the PUD being the affordable option. Uh, whereas without a PUD, it is no longer for
I'm sorry.
You're muted. Okay. Still muted, Lindsay.
Can you hear?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. So I wanted to address two things, uh, with my couple of minutes. Um, first of all, I second, uh, Ms. Councilperson Krieger's recommendation for the phase two. To Judith's point, uh, those of us who are opposed to this are not confused. We understand that this is not an affordable housing proposal. The PUD is not, uh, both, uh, options, which we still need to see option two. Um, that's my second point is that we, we need to see option two still. Both, uh, result in, uh, not an affordable housing, but housing that caters to the highest earners. We've not seen a parallel plan. We've not seen the option two. We have not seen the numbers, um, that Hosea had referred to earlier. It seems that there's still a lot to be, um, discussed, uh, cost wise. Um, so if this PUD should fail or be overturned in referendum, uh, we need to see that parallel plan, what would happen afterwards. Um, but the second point I want to make is about misinformation, uh, and this lip service that we pay to transparency. Uh, the lip service that we pay, uh, to affordability. And, and second, uh, to that point, uh, ethics concerns, um, are a problem for me. I'm referring specifically to, uh, recusals, which we heard I'm referring specifically to recusals, which we heard Mr. Stokes speak to earlier. Councilperson Stokes has recused himself. However, there have been other members of other commissions who have been required, requested or coerced to either step down from their positions or recuse themselves. But that rule has been applied unequally, specifically in the case of the planning commission. And I know that there have been Ohio Ethics Committee requests with differing answers, and some of those answers have not come back yet. I do not believe that there should be a vote taken while there are outstanding ethical issues and ethical concerns. I think that there needs to be some clearer answers and perhaps a second opinion from a lawyer. Perhaps a second opinion to our solicitors, since it seems that some of those requirements, rules and mandates are unclear to the village since they don't seem to be being applied.
Okay. And Lindsay, that is three minutes. If you could quicken me your village affiliation, please.
I live here for the last 12 years and I own a business here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Lindsay. Um, all right. Let's have Brittany Baum next.
Hello, this is Brittany Baum. I am a villager. I've lived here since 2015 and I also own a business in town. I'm currently opposed for the PUD. I've sent in numerous letters. But my main point is I want to just echo what Dino had to say. I feel like we have an opportunity to negotiate on the current PUD more with the developers and perhaps create some better living options for all of our community members, not just a, a smaller percentage of community members. And then I'd also like to know, like what Lindy said, what are there other plans out there? If this were to not pass, or if this is to go to a referendum, what does that look like? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Brittany. Um, John Hemfling.
Hi. Thank you. So I really appreciate the presentation at the beginning by Denise Swinger and Bran Purcell's explaining what the development will look like, basically the difference between the PUD and what it will look like if the, the PUD is denied. Essentially that it would look the very similar, except for that we would have a single family housing units instead of duplexes and townhouses. And that the village would not be gifted that one point, whatever acres of land for affordable housing and that there would be no park. So, you know, I certainly want to agree with everyone that said that outside of what the, the village will be donated, if the PUD is approved, the rest of the housing development is basically gentrification, but that's basically a concern with the development regardless of whether the PUD is approved or not. I think the, I think a similar, I think that it's a pretty similar with a concern about taxes or the environmental concerns. Since a lot of the liabilities to the school district and the village, of course, are fixed, presumably more citizens, you know, helps spread out those fixed costs across more households. But, you know, that's, that'll be the same regardless. I really appreciate council expressing particular, already anticipating sort of worrying about the safety of the land that they're anticipating getting donated to them. And, you know, I think that that's, that's, I'm, I'm very glad to hear that, that council is concerned about, concerned about all of these safety issues. But again, I think that it's, it's worth highlighting that the safety issues will basically exist regardless of whether the PUD is approved or, or denied. And in any case, you know, I support this proposal, obviously. So I support the PUD application. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, John. And village affiliation?
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. So I'm John Hemfling. I've lived here for about 25 years.
Okay. Thank you. And I know Judy didn't get a chance to catch Dina Palata, who is a resident and a business owner. All right. Johanna Schultz. For Johanna.
Hi, Joanna. So I'm a homeowner and, and I'm a tree hugger. And because of that, I've reached out to several Ohio State Environmental Regulatory Agencies this week, and I found a lot of very interesting information for people who care about endangered species and the nearby protected Little Miami River. That is a state and national wild and scenic river, which has its own protections. And I reached out to our regional endangered species coordinator from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service who told me that I can't find record of consultation in our system, at least not under the project name, developer name, or consultant's name. In regards to the Army Corps of Engineer permit verification that Ober submitted for us, the community of Yellow Springs. On good faith, I assume that what was stated in there is verified by those state agencies. But meanwhile, we have endangered species in that area, as was disclosed in that permit verification, not the actual permit. That said, there are two endangered species that's there. And in the 2016 Ohio EPA RCRA Facilities Investigation, it discusses that the matted spike rush, okay, sorry. Two other protected species have been discovered along Hyde Road. And I also reached out. So it's really important that we get that clarified by independent environmental phase two review. For anyone who cares about the environment, I imagine all of us living here in Yellow Springs care deeply about the environment, which is why we have something like the comprehensive land use plan that uses sustainability throughout. I reached out to the regional manager at the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Scenic Rivers Program. He said their hands are tied. They can't really do anything. However, our opposition group, I guess we are. And not all of us, I've never met Dave in my life. I don't know, like, I don't, I don't understand why the opposition group is like being like Team Dave or something. He's a cool guy. I'm a fan. I don't understand why there's this need to lump together like blue, red, Republican, Democrat, Dave, no Dave. Like it's just people who care about the future of this community versus a PUD. Which anyway, the Yellow Springs zoning code, section 1254 for a PUD states proposed uses in design of PUD shall be substantially consistent with the village's adopted comprehensive plan and the principles for land stewardship contained and done.
Thanks, Johanna.
I am a homeowner and tree hugger in Yellow Springs.
All right. Thank you. All right. Let's have Dirk speak next.
Good evening. Yeah. Thanks for giving me some time to speak. I'm Dirk Lakovich Van Gogh, village homeowner, resident. I'm not affiliated with any particular group. My views are my own. And my views are primarily related in surrounding the idea of homeowner affordability or, or housing affordability, which are two separate subjects. I knew from the beginning, I've studied all the information from the start that this was never proposed as an affordable housing project, either homeowner or rent. That's the way it is. I would like to challenge Ober to consider a higher degree of corporate responsibility, especially in this village of Yellow Springs, to continue negotiation and see what else you can provide and still be able to make a profit on land that you own towards increasing affordable housing or affordable rental housing in this village. I think a lot of times we don't talk in terms of reality. I work in community development. I've spent most of my life working for safe, secure, affordable housing across the US and the world. So just maybe my effort here is just to bring a few facts to bear. Eighty-three percent of our residents earning $50,000 or less in this village are what's considered cost burdened in terms of housing. Thirty-three percent between 50 and 75,000 are also cost burdened. Only 6.7% of our residents in the 100 and 150 K range are cost burdened. The reality of housing is that we can't under the current PUD proposal, increase diversity in this village, which we're all, is already in decline. Because we're going to economically segregate people from housing, because this is not in fact an affordable housing development. And I think it should be renegotiated to secure more. You can't build, no matter how good it is, and funding's not assured for it, even if the land is through donation, 25 affordable housing units and increase ones that are not by 100 to 150 and say that you're increasing the percentage of affordable housing options in the village.
That is three minutes.
Thank you, Dirk. All right. Let's have Sarah Min next. Sarah Sinclairman.
Hi, I'm Sarah Sinclairman and I'm a resident of Yellow Springs. I want to talk about the sidewalk and safety issues. So first sidewalks take years to put in. The limestone sidewalks, that act of, or act of transportation plan started in 2007, according to the Y S News. And I think they're just starting to go in now. Obviously they're not going in while it's snowing, but they're just starting to go in. Sidewalks will also require, you know, eminent domain of people's lands that trees will come down and that yards will be destroyed. So the question is, why won't you require the conditional for a right turn only onto Spalon and a left turn only into the development to be able to prevent any of that traffic from getting onto Spalon in the first place? Also, with the other entrance over by Brooks House, over by Dollar General, what traffic calming principles are you putting there so that there isn't danger to the kids in that neighborhood? Are you putting in speed bumps, an additional stop signs, a traffic circle? What are you doing to protect those children over there? And then inside of the development, you guys have straight, straightaways going through there with no traffic calming. I don't understand why there's not even basic curves. It's basic traffic calming principles that haven't been applied to any of this. So where, where is, you know, the transportation expertise looking for how to calm this traffic? Have you hired anyone? Have you brought anybody in who's an expert? Or are they just, you're just taking the first thing that's thrown down and not negotiating for us one bit? So I have to say, I'm a resident. Do you need my address?
I do, Sarah.
Okay. Thanks, Sarah. Um, all right. Let's have John Fee next.
Okay. I'm probably the one person who's not going to speak on Ober.
That'll have to come at citizen concerns then. So
Okay.
Okay. So we'll, we'll get you back when we get there. All right. Okay. Amy. All right. Are you there, Amy? We can.
Okay. Hi. All right. I'm Amy Wamsley and I'm a member of the Arts and Culture Commission, as well as other community organizations. However, tonight speaking as a concerned community member. I have tried to be neutral in this focusing on community education, but at this point I am opposed to the PUD. Before I get into that reasoning, I would actually like to talk about my disappointment in the village town hall. I specifically asked for a list of questions sent in by citizens to be shared along with an FAQ. I was told this would be shared and I have not seen it. I have looked at this week's packet and in other places. I consider myself rather an intelligent person and I'm at a loss of where this information is. If I'm having trouble, other people must be having trouble as well. How can we possibly hold council accountable if we do not know what is being questioned in your responses? The first 45 minutes of the, what's the report by village about the PUD? It seems that questions were being skipped and selected, but how do we know what was being skipped? Then when a council member spoke, a community member was basically told they were being dishonest in so many words and that Ober was given the floor to disprove with the community member. They refer to that document in regards to boring, but where's the report? And are we supposed to take Ober at their word? I agree with Lisa. There needs to be a second phase in regards to the environmental evaluation. Next, right after that, villagers were asked to clarify on whose behalf they were speaking and shortly following, shortly following that. That interaction suggested ulterior motives when that was stated, and I was upset by that statement at an open town hall meeting. We don't need to further divide this community, especially given just our world environment. And I was just personally offended. Particularly since there are ethical issues as Lindsay brought up. So with that said, holding people accountable to this is why I'm questioning the PUD. Parks and retention ponds are being sold as good graces of Ober. However, if you look at the sustainability website, you will see that the village recommends a PUD has 15% of the land used as parks and 5% on developments for 50 acres or more. Where's the park in the alternative plan to the PUD? And why did the village not negotiate their own recommendations in the PUD? The park with the PUD is the same size as what it should be without the PUD. As the retention ponds, as also the retention ponds, which will be putting dredge into the Yellow Springs stream. It's actually part of the sustainability recommendations. Of course, it'll look pretty as it hurts our wildlife, but you know, we'll forget about it. Ideally, one recommendation would be that no lawn chemicals are part of the HOA if possible. Finally, as council members have stated, the duplex and/or the townhomes do not ideally meet the needs of the village. Recently, a duplex and park meadows came up for sale, a four bedroom, two baths sold for $249,000 and was on the market for three months in 2021. That's a significantly long time in this market, which was booming. To me, that's
That's three minutes.
I just, I finally, I just want to thank Mary Ann for responding to my letter. I appreciate that. And I do oppose the PUD at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Amy. Um, all right. Let's have Kendra next.
Hi, this is Kendra Cicilline, longtime villager, second time caller. I, this, this whole decision is being couched in as a false dichotomy, I think. It's like either the RA, Plan Two, or Plan One, PUD, take one or the other. I think we have a third option. I think we can do something better. This is the biggest development we've seen in Yellow Springs probably ever. So let's make it good. Let's look at sustainable design. Let's look at open spaces. The PUD is supposed to have an enhancement to the environment and protection of the environment to get this PUD. We're protecting a channelized stream. How about we remander it and do some stream restoration? How about we not put that wetland detention right in the woods? How about we have smaller lots, but larger open spaces? There are lots of things to sustainable design that the smart people of Yellow Springs can do, and I just don't think we've done enough. So for me, it's not one or the other. It's that there's a third option that we really haven't looked at. I'm an environmental scientist. I'm an ecologist. I used to do environmental impacts for developers in Chicago. I'm a wetland delineator, so I'm familiar with site assessment. I did read the phase one environmental plan. A lot of that is just a desk assessment, looking at, oh, is there a rickersite nearby? Yes or no? They walked the property once and then they did interviews and asked Ober and Sturing, was there anything bad that happened here? And they're like, no, nothing happened here. And so I just don't think, I think that phase two that Lisa suggested is something that is really needed. And I, I support that. So again, I just encourage us to do better, to slow down, to take more input. And also this mix of housing, I don't get the benefit of it. It's all high priced. So what's the difference if we're a high priced condo or a high priced house? Why is there this love of all this mixed use? Why is there this love of all this mixed use? Why do we want to see these townhomes that will be this very thin, ugly, shaded canyon of townhomes? What is the appeal of these different types of houses? I mean, who are we trying to attract? They're all expensive. I mean, the cheapest thing there is going to be three hundred dollars. We also have no guarantee or land restriction that these prices will actually be what they say they are. Once we grant this PUD, they can charge whatever they want, as far as I understand. So how are we assured of these prices that, you know, will actually be within the ranges that they state they'll be? Okay, I gotta go before Judy cuts me off. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Kendra. Um, all right, let's have Max next, Max Chrome.
Hi, everybody. Can you see me and hear me?
You can.
Okay, great. Starting with the planning commission meeting, I showed that this project could be denied, denied just based on its technical merits alone. For example, protection of the stream is a significant natural feature. It's not significant. It's not even natural, and it's not being protected. You can throw this whole application based on that, that one thing. Further, a PUD, according to our code, is supposed to be for special projects that can't be achieved under traditional zoning. It's for projects that are aligned with the values and the vision of Yellow Springs. I've argued at length that this application is not compatible with the village or even the purpose of a PUD ordinance. This is a matter of opinion, of course. But to the councillors, I'm going to say, if you agree with this opinion, you can deny this project tonight. I've avoided attacking the design of this project because I thought it should fail just on its technical merits. But now I want to let you know what I think about the design. I agree with my neighbors who have said that the houses are hideous, but, but that's not my problem with this design. My problem is that the urban planning of it, the neighborhood design, is, is very poor. You've got the very biggest lots for the highest-income households in one enclave. And that's the enclave where the comp plan calls for the highest density. You've got the medium-high-income households in another enclave, and you have the less-high-income households in duplexes that are all lined up together in a tiny little row. But make no mistakes, every single lot is for the highest-income households as defined in the Bowen Report. They're just separated by how high the, you know, how high the income category is. Finally, you have the affordable housing, often one little corner. It doesn't even touch the other properties, if you'll take a look at the map. It's literally separating the households by their income level, and that's just, that's gross. It's terrible earning plan, or urban planning, and it just doesn't align with our values. This is not a well-designed neighborhood. And to the councillors, if you agree with this opinion, this application should be denied. This is a really important decision. This is ten percent of our housing stock, everybody. What, what I would like you to do, councillors, speaking directly to you, I'd like you to make a motion tonight to deny this PUD. Require Ober to provide an actual stream impact study, not a bait and switch for some Army Corps letter. Require them to provide a Phase Two environmental study and have them come back with a workable parallel plan. We've seen this parallel plan, but it hasn't been vetted. I can tell you, I have found technical mistakes in it that invalidate it. I'm not going to tell you what they are, but if we get there, I most certainly will. Lastly, I would ask you to create an ad hoc citizen committee to be party to all the future negotiations with this developer. That way, these concerns can be part of the negotiations. This should never happen behind closed doors. It should have never happened behind closed doors in the first place.
Max, that is three minutes, and I need your affiliation with the village.
Okay, my affiliation is that I am the captain of the state championship track and field team from nineteen eighty-five. I was a point scorer at that. I am still the record holder for the discus in the shot put at Yellow Springs High School, and I am a business owner. And I am helping Mr. Dave Chappelle build beautiful, wonderful developments where we are breathing new life into the old, underused facilities in, in, in Yellow Springs. If you, if, if you don't trust what I say, if you think I'm full of misinformation, just Google me. You, you can figure out what my reputation is. And make good trouble with me, guys. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Max. Let's have Matthew Kirk next.
Can you hear me, Brian?
Uh, yes, I can.
All right, now you can see me too, yeah?
Yes.
All right, I guess a little bit, I just wanted to echo a lot of the things I said in the town hall previously, which is, you know, that we talk a lot with this development about the RA development being so horrible and terrible. But when I actually looked into what actual people who are buying brand-new homes want, over eighty percent of people who are buying brand-new homes, regardless of your age demographic, they want a single-family house, right? So that is going to appeal to the largest swath of people. And particularly if we talk about people that are in the age demographic of being under fifty years of age, if we were to develop a new single-family home development, we'd likely end up with that development having thirty-seven percent of the households being families, or at least in that age demographic, which is fifty-two households. If we go the PUD route, where we take the number of single-family households from one forty down to sixty-four, we're going to end up with only twenty-four single-family hot, home, family households, which is a significant decrease. Because by pursuing duplexes, the reality is, based on what I found in the homebuyer survey from the Association of Realtors, is that only people that tend to be in the older demographics want to buy a duplex. You know, the reality is, you know, myself, somebody who grew up around poorer situations, you hear the word duplex, or triplex, or quad, or whatever, and you think it's going to be a cheaper form of housing. But when you talk about these new housing developments, a duplex isn't really a cheaper form of house. It's just a low-maintenance form of house. You know, it has somebody who's going to mow your lawn and do all that stuff that you don't want to do, but still gives you the value of homeownership. And so I think when we look at this project, we really have to, you know, consider that there are some real benefits to RA if we want to increase the number of families in the village. Which, if you look at the Bowen Housing Study, it says flat in there that millennials and people there in the family demographic are going to struggle to find housing product in the village because simply we don't have housing stock that has of a quality that would be attractive to people like that. I think we all know, if you follow the available residential housing in the village, that a lot of stuff that comes on the market needs a lot of repair. And, you know, if you're a family struggling just to get a down payment together, having to take on a project of significant renovation isn't going to be as attractive to you. And we see a lot of those houses actually going to people that, you know, have the resources, older homeowners. And so I think that we may be missing an opportunity here to bring more families to the village. So I want to encourage council to look at the positives of an RA development and not just look at this as some.
Three minutes, Matt.
Alternative. Thank you, Judy. Appreciate it.
Okay, Matthew Kirk, resident and business owner. Okay, so I'm going to take the last three people with hands up, which are Patrick Lake, then Catherine Price, then Jessica Thomas. And then we're going to wrap up this discussion, keeping in mind that we have a second reading and public hearing at our next meeting. So, Patrick Lake.
Brian, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, hey, thank you, Brian. I want to start by thanking Mary Ann for her comments. I really appreciate that, since you're the Mary Ann. Thank you. You know, I think that we have incomplete information to be able to make a decision tonight. A number of community members have raised a lot of good questions. I have raised questions about a cost-benefit analysis. And while I understand and appreciate that that's being done, I think it should be complete before decision is made. I'd like to echo Lisa's suggestion for a Phase Two analysis. I think that is really critical to understand fully what is at the properties and what the impacts could be to the community and to the developer, and what the cost might be for this project before we make a decision. So I would urge the council to, if a decision has to be made today, to deny the PUD, and let's get back to the negotiating table. But I think it is appropriate to kick the can down the road and request for additional information. A feasibility study on the lot that is designated as affordable housing would be wise. I'd like to know the cost and timeline. Who's going to share the costs for widening the land? I've asked for that. I think it's appropriate to answer those questions before we make a decision. At the end of the day, I think there's a lot of consensus in the community, regardless of if it's pro or against the PUD. We all would like to see more housing in the community. Would like to see a vibrant community. We're all invested in this community, one for our own reasons. So let's strive to have a better deal. We can do better. Thank you so much. Patrick Lake, my parents moved me here when I was a wee baby in nineteen seventy-nine. I moved back and am starting a business this year. Thank you all.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Catherine Price.
Okay. I, first of all, I really, I appreciate the council members that spoke today, everyone, actually. And I do believe we all have a different way of connecting the dots of what's happening here. And we all belong in this, so. I would like to introduce an option three, because, and it, it goes in line with some things people have said. But I was walking down the street the other day, and I ran into a young man named Alex Malaman, and he gave me this little booklet about zoning. And it, and, and his letter in the paper right after that said some things about zoning, where Residence A may be very helpful, it may be very flexible for people to add granny flats or additional units, maybe even affordable housing if they choose that. There's a way to redesign up here, and how can everybody get what they want? I, I would love it, Mr. Ober, first of all, if you would, if you would accept this gift, if I may send this pamphlet and you tell me where to send it. And if you would work with people like Alex and Max and try to figure out a neighborhood design that really fit Yellow Springs, I think we would welcome that. And I would suggest you go slow, because it would be less of a shock. And I think if you were to sell off that bottom land and just let that go, that the, the village of Yellow Springs, we, we raised money. If you were to offer that for sale, we raised money at Whitehall. I was a part of that. Over a million dollars in six weeks to purchase the conservation rights. And that would, that would resolve some of that problem. The traffic problem would be resolved. There's, there's a better way to go. You would have a great reputation, because people would say, look what Ober is doing. He's doing something new. He's built sustainable, energy-efficient housing. I mean, you could do, this is such a wonderful opportunity for the Ober company to really improve their reputation. And whatever you would lose and what you think you might make in an uphill battle, it looks like, over many years, the value of your reputation, money can't buy that. And I just think if, if, if we were to work together towards something that were a little different than either this or that, that there could be some satisfaction village-wide, and I just hope that. That's, that's, that's what my vision is. That's where it is. People say, oh, you don't want this or that, but what is it you want? That's what I want. I, I've written a letter for the packet. It didn't make it in. It will be the next time. Take me seriously, though. Ober, I would love to send you this book. He said to pass it along. I think, I think you might like to look at it.
And that's three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine, do we get your village affiliation?
Catherine Price, I'm a resident for twenty-eight years. I love this place.
Kathy, all right, I'm going to make an exception, but this will be the last one, because we do need to wrap up today's discussion. So Kelly Carp or Carpe had put her hand up after I said the limit. So Kelly, you can go ahead and go next.
Thanks. So, let's see, back in November, I watched a council meeting, and I was really shocked at how out of touch I felt like council seemed with its residents concerning, in particular, this development. So to be honest, I was angry enough with the misrepresentation of Yellow Springs community attitudes that I had heard, that I went ahead and created a petition, and it really quickly gained traction. So that petition has four hundred and thirty-three signatures at this point. Those four hundred and thirty-three people that don't want to see this development carry through at all, because that's what I was looking for. I thought, I haven't heard anyone be in support of this. And they certainly don't want this PUD, which offers nothing but concessions and ease for the developer. So I'll read you the text of the petition, just in case. It says, "We, the citizens of Yellow Springs, strongly petition against this development. We oppose the development as presented and do not wish to see it pursued without further independent studies on the layout of the development, structure of the capacity and runoff concerns, and accurate traffic increase information. As villagers, we want to see more transparency and accountability from our local government and strongly oppose moving forward without adequate community input." So people added their signatures only if they currently resided or were business owners, and they were supporting us in our push for representation by our village council. So I believe that our strength is in our commitment to our community and that it's our right to have our voices heard before decisions are made on our behalf. So again, four hundred and thirty-three people at this point, and that was in, I think, two weeks. And I've watched council continue to be woefully remiss in meeting after meeting, even pretending to represent the majority of their citizens. And I've heard them accuse us of lying, of misinformation, and of being puppets. I've also watched them co-host town halls with a Trump-loving developer, take up a lot of citizen time with PR campaign rhetoric, and refrain from giving citizens specific information. And in fact, I bring up that petition because none of that has been specifically addressed in any of the meetings I've seen. So, council, your citizens are speaking now, and we have other options. And it's very much time you explain to them in full with detail. I'll even take it in writing. So I am Kelly Carp, and I am a homeowner in Yellow Springs.
All right, thank you, Kelly. All right.
Brian, I'm sorry to interrupt. I had, I had a letter from Pat Brown that she had asked me to read in. I understand that we're out of time tonight. I just did want to say that she wanted to speak in favor of the PUD, and I will put her letter in full in the next packet. And I do apologize for that.
Thanks, Judy. All right, and Jessica Thomas.
So sorry about that. Jessica Thomas, Yellow Springs News. My question is in regard to the hundred and fifty thousand dollars value of the one point seven-five acres that is proposed to be donated for affordable housing. How does that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars factor into the RFP process that will come to build affordable housing? And how will that number inform the RMP? And is Home Inc. on the table as far as being a bidder for the RFP in the future?
Yeah, that's a good question. What I, I can answer at this point that, you know, certainly, we are interested in Home Inc. being involved as our, you know, resident, permanent, affordable housing provider. And in general, regardless of who does the building, they're generally, generally involved. We haven't discussed that yet, and I, I think part of that is approving the PUD. But I will say that that hundred and fifty thousand doesn't factor in that this will be build-ready. So the value that's also included with bringing the utilities to that part of the property. And also, I, I think I've mentioned this before, Emily Seibel has highlighted that the most valuable way to get points is donated land that has infrastructure. So I think there, there are going to be more details, depending on the outcome with the PUD. But hopefully that answers part of it. Okay, so, um, I will just make a few brief comments, because I think a lot has been covered. But, you know, I do want to highlight, you know, again, that I believe that, you know, when, when I look at some of the things that Don Johnson, E. Fleck, and others highlighted about what council's decision is, it involves certain parameters. And related to that, you know, we have. And related to that, you know, we have really a decision that's about, do we have a PUD or do we have existing zoning? I will say that there are significant limitations on rezoning. But rezoning does not mean, as our attorney, Brienne, highlighted, does not mean that we can force a certain kind of development. And beyond that, I want to highlight that I think the concerns around environmental issues are, it's great that those have been highlighted by many folks. And I think it's important to emphasize that work has been done. More work can still be done. But there is also an aspect that was highlighted that once the development starts is when we also start digging deeper and discovering more. And, and maybe that more means that it is in fact a environmentally safe property, which is what that data has indicated so far. But there is an aspect of there being continuing negotiations, not only in this process, but also when the PUD goes back to planning commission. Otherwise, I'm not going to say much more at this point. But I think that there are a lot of things that we need to make sure people do have access to. Because I know work has been done on answering all of these questions. There are websites and other areas where those can be found. But maybe we just need to post it on Facebook and just take pictures of those Q and A sheets. Get it on Facebook if that's the most accessible. And we can also talk about publishing it in the YS News. The last thing I want to mention, because referendum has been brought up quite a few times. So what I know about referendum is that we would have to have a special election, which the village pays for. It's about $1,000 per voting machine. So we have four precincts. So that would be about $4,000. And of course, that would also involve continuing to inform our community members until that special election, which would happen in August. So with that, I am going to ask Judy to call the roll. This is not the final vote, but.
I thought it was April.
No, we, we can't do it until August because of the, the timing. You have to be 90 days out. And once we make our second decision, if, if it is, there is a petition for referendum, there will be 30 days to get the 10% signatures that are required. So that's why it would not be able to happen until August. But saying that, Lisa, go ahead.
I have a process question, so finish your point.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, so there were a couple of things that were brought up, including an additional financial contribution from Ober related to infrastructure, specifically widening it or sidewalks on the land. My concerns about a phase two environmental assessment. And then a few other stormwater detention, stream preservation, elements of the HOA. And so for me, I'm a little confused about process because without having some of these issues clarified, I'm uncomfortable. And so I'm not quite sure how we do that or, or how, I mean, I, I, I believe that having a mixed property type development is better than just, all right, I believe that. But as it is right now, I, I still have very big concerns. I saw that Brienne raised her hand.
Yeah, I'm getting ready to address Lisa's procedural questions. As far as a call for a vote on a first reading, the other issue, Brian, is I have not had every council member reaffirm that they've reviewed the record of the planning commission proceedings. And because there have been these other issues raised and we've got additional information that was in the packet for council members to review, I'm not sure that it would be ripe for a vote tonight. I would agree with Lisa. So there is a lot of information to review. You've considered a lot of citizen comments tonight, so taking a vote at the second reading would be more appropriate.
Okay. Do any other council members have comments?
I agree. I would rather not take the vote. I agree with Lisa and Brienne that I'd like to get a bit more information about several of the things that have been talked about.
Yeah. So for me, not entirely comfortable with a vote now. And also, more importantly, the, you know, the phase two environmental assessment.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that because my philosophy has always been if council members don't feel that they've gotten enough information, that we do not need to have them vote on the first reading. So we will not do that. And with that, we will go to our next piece of legislation, which is, I just went to the wrong page. First reading of ordinance 202203. And Judy, we can do that by title only.
All right, this is repealing old chapter 288 Arts and Culture Commission of Title 8 Boards and Commissions of Part II Administration Code of the Code of Health Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new Chapter 288 Public Arts and Culture Commission.
All right, can I get a motion?
I still move.
Second.
Okay. Lisa, are you talking about this one?
Well, sure, and I can be brief. For a number of years, we've had in Yellow Springs a nonprofit called the Arts Council. They do great work in the village. So we've also had a commission called the Arts and Culture Commission. And over the past four years, since I've been serving with that group, we've really doubled down on our mission to be arts activists and to express the village values through various kinds of artistic expressions. And we know that the community is confused, like what's the Arts Council, what's the Arts and Culture Commission? And so we just want to change our name so that we are better differentiated and clarified. And that's all there is to it. We believe that we would be better served to be the Public Arts and Culture Commission. The PAC. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments?
I think it's a great solution, especially public art. You know, that really conveys something different, I think, than just art. So I appreciate it.
Well, we were actually, it was originally the Public Arts Commission. And then it became Arts and Culture Commission. And now we're putting the public back in there. I think that's great, too. All right. Kevin, were you going to say something?
No, I'm just preparing to vote.
Yes.
I've been muted for so long. I'm just practicing unmuted.
All right, well, good. Yeah. And, and I think Judy, we can go ahead and call the roll on this.
Dee Stokes.
Yes.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Housh.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Resolution 202207. And we can do that one by title only as well.
This is authorizing the village manager to enter into a settlement agreement and release with Johnny Burns.
All right, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All right. Brienne, are you talking about this?
I think Hostway can. If council recalls, we had a communication back in December related to an issue that preceded both myself and the current village manager. And as a result of that, which was, which was an ethics commission investigation that did not result in a settlement, did not result in prosecution, but did result in some legal bills. And for our Public Works Superintendent, we would be looking at settlement to resolve this longstanding issue.
Okay. Hostway, did you want to add anything or?
I think the only thing I would add is that in, and as you consider this request, the work has been primarily led by Brienne. But from an immunity's perspective, issues like this, we would have, under my, my administration, we would, we would have been proactive about ensuring that we don't have these situations and that we have the proper procedures in place. And we're also taking responsibility for providing the coverage and services to any and all employees that are working on our behalf.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council members? Okay. If not, then Judy, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Dee Brown.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Housh.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next is 202208. And we can do that by title only as well.
All right, this is setting broadband pilot project pricing for 2022.
All right, can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
All right, Hostway.
Brian, thank you. If you've been following my, my broadband reports, you know that we have a pilot project that we set out to connect up to 300 homes and businesses with fiber to the home service. The pilot area has been expanded to cover 410 service areas. However, we took, deliver on the grant obligations. We are providing services to the first 250 businesses and locations that sign up. So I'm going to share my screen a little bit here. I'm going to show you the proposed sites. The pilot area is broken down into zones. These are all the highlighted areas are the areas that we will be able to deliver fiber to the home service. And those are, here are the downtown areas. And as you know, we also included priority areas that were identified in partnership with the schools. And so there are a lot of high priority addresses here at the Hawthorne Apartment areas and down at Corey Street Apartments. So down here. So these are the proposed locations that we are planning to deliver the fiber to the home. The total breakdown here is broken down by zone and by number of units. So we're looking at 410 units with 261 of those being residential, 76 being commercial, 70 being multi-units. Two government entities and one that just doesn't fit any of those aboves. And here's a breakdown of the 12 zones. So what we're, what we need from council is, we need council to approve a, a rate schedule just for the pilot project and just for 2022. And that will be the, the last piece that we need to be able to fully launch the broadband pilot project. And we can start delivering a service to the first lucky 250 customers.
Okay.
Now, this will provide a lot of much-needed feedback and will build to be able to deliver high-quality, reliable internet service to the entire village.
All right. Kevin, you mic'd on. Did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Hopefully, I noticed you, you emphasized rightly so on a couple of occasions that this is specifically for the pilot project. Certainly, the, the way the, the resolution is written, you know, for 2022, that I anticipate we would probably just get the pilot project done in 2022, but hopeful that we could go further. So to what degree might the pilot project pricing tiers represent what might be in place when we go live for the entire village? If you can answer that.
Yes, I can. And I can answer from the work of the Technology Advisory Group and the Broadband Group. And that is that the pro forma anticip, the pro forma model use the, the figures that have been proposed to you, the $45 per tier one for the 300 megabit connections and a $65 for one gigabit connection. That is the pro forma pricing model, and that creates a sustainable business model with financing, with the village financing the build-out of, of the, of the program and the project. The figures can change, but I think the figures are likely to go down. And what are some of the things that will cause the figures to go down? Would be that we're waiting for the federal government to make a decision on our, on our proposal. And that is the proposal to give us $3 million to finance and build out for the entire village. So I think that if we receive those additional grant money, that's going to have an impact on the price structure, but a downward, downward pressure. So we'll be in a position to support, definitely support the, the business model has been presented in pass and, and perhaps do a price reduction. I think that from the goals and the vision that the team has been working from is to bring about high-quality, reliable internet service that is at, at the price points of current broadband, sorry, internet service that is based qua, that's off coaxial cable, to be at that price point, but better. Certainly, the, the speeds that we're proposing, the $45, the $45 service right now as we're proposing is in line on price point of what Spectrum is offering on a 12-month introductory rate. But at about three times the speed. What I'm getting at my home is 100 megabits per second at $49 a month. And that's because I had to make a couple of calls. I was paying $70. So that's just a, a comparison to what the product that's out in the market. Kevin, I, I think that's a long response to your question.
Well, it was, and I, and every word mattered. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, I want to underscore how exciting this is. And I appreciate that we continue to move forward and, and seek funding to support better, cheaper internet for our residents. Any other questions or comments from council members? Okay, great. So Judy, let's go ahead and call the roll then.
Yes, McLean.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes, those lucky ducks.
Housh.
Yes, I know. I noticed my, my house is not in there either. So, but we know it'll expand soon. So, all right. Well, thanks for all the hard work on this. And we've got one more piece of legislation, which is 202209, which we can again do by title only.
All right, this is approving appointment of a council designee to the Yellow Springs Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So Lisa, do you want to talk about this?
Sure, yeah, I will. The, the bylaws of the YSCC have been designed to allow two directors appointed. And one can be an elected official and the other can be appointed by the village council as a public official to the YSCC Board of Directors. And up to this point, we've named two council members just because we've been establishing the YSCC. It's been a lot. And we've, you know, we, we just have not exercised this option. The township has. But I think given everything that we have on our plate right now as a council, the time is right to take this direction and nominate our second person as appointed by the village council as a public official. This person isn't considered to be a community member at large. We do have a member like that on the YSCC. This person is standing in as a member of council. So that's the proposition. Fortunately, we have a community member who's interested in serving. It's a lot of work and I'm grateful to Gary for this. So that's the gist of this. Kevin, Stokes also has been sitting on the Development Corp with me. I would be rolling off. Gary Zaremski would be taking my place. So Kevin, do you have any comments?
Well, thank you, Lisa. And, and thank you for your service, both you and Mary Ann, for the groundbreaking service that you've done in creating the YSCC and all the different iterations that has gone through. different iterations that it's gone through. Chris Kennard, if you're listening, thanks for all the work you did from the solicitor's standpoint. But certainly, I understand your motivation, Lisa, and I appreciate that. And I would be happy to continue to serve. And I understand from various sources that Gary Zaremski has become a, a village council government geek, if you will. And as a retired engineer, he probably didn't have to go very far to get to that point. But I know Gary personally, and I know his work ethic, and I look forward to serving along with him. And once again, thank you, Lisa and Mary Ann for your service.
And I, well, thank you, Kevin. I still want to say one thing. The Y S D C is a five oh one C three. It stands on its own as a five oh one C three. We have our own solicitor who has validated that this is legal and also consistent with our bylaws. So although we have people from council appointed, we stand separate from council in these ways.
Great. Yeah, I'll also emphasize I appreciate Gary's connection with our Planning Commission because that is certainly quite relevant to the work of the Yellow Springs Development Corporation. Any questions or comments? All right, Judy, let's go ahead and call the roll then.
Yes, McQueen.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Citizen Concerns. This is the time on the agenda where we invite any comments about items that are not on the agenda. And I believe that John Fee has something. And so I'm going to start with John Fee.
Oh, yeah. So I gotta, I have to say real quick, it's uncanny the similar expressions of those in a position to the PUD, the experience that they express to the experience the CRB committee has. I just have to say that. But I wanted to highlight Lisa's call to action on the Citizen Review Board. And I'm gonna start at the end of her proposed next steps. And one of the last points is get started listening to Citizen Concerns, meaning listening to them. And then I'll go back up the top and reiterate some of the valuable points on this call to action. On on eleven fifteen, those councils voted unanimously to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for the Citizen Review Board as a line item under boards and commissions. It's time to make progress on this. She continues, this is Lisa, to strongly support the conversation for CRB Chair Coordinator, similar to how the village mediation coordinator is. Now, this is very important right here. However, she does not see this as appropriate, given that the current V M P coordinator also serves in law enforcement. And then she goes on. Unfortunately, the report by Mr. Larry James on nine twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one did not fulfill what was understood to be what he was hired for. He instead presented a generic analysis of CRBs in seven other cities and topics to consider rather than the review of our proposal. This proposal that council has now is from the people. A diverse population of the piece of this village are the architects of this proposal. We put a lot of time and energy in this, and it's idiosyncratic to this village. We're not looking for other cities' CRBs. So like she says, this leaves us at square one in terms of the legal scope of the current proposal. In other words, council has not even addressed this since we have submitted this at all. So what, if you don't want to get into weeds, and if you want to learn about it, Laura and I are here to share and present so people know what this is. If you don't know what this proposal entails, that tells a lot in itself. And additionally, he summarized this analysis and memorandum under attorney-client privilege, so.
And that is.
Okay, and then last.
John Fee, your village affiliation?
Lastly, I'm a human citizen. And real quick, I was hoping the officer, you could do a soft survey of the police officers on how they feel on about a CRB, because the one officer I did talk to for thirty minutes at police headquarters who didn't really know much about one, when I explained what one was and what this one specifically entails, that officer was all for it. And I'm not sure if the officers are being told about this. So maybe a soft survey from them.
Okay, thanks, John Fee. And actually, we've heard a lot of support from the officers. So I'm not sure why that one didn't know about it. So thank you. Okay, and I saw Max Crone's hand go up.
Hi, gang. Hi, I wanted to come back on because I have a public apology I would like to offer to the village. At a recent public hearing, I made statements to the, that effect, to the effect that withdrawing a line between villagers and non-villagers, and I was really trying to drive that point home. Kind of as part of an argument I was making at that time. And watching a subsequent council meeting, I noticed that Mr. Stokes had a reaction to my words and so I reached out to Mr. Stokes privately and he was gracious enough to accept my apology. But I wanted to say that I agree with Mr. Stokes that trying to draw a line between villagers and non-villagers is not a value of Yellow Springs, and it's not a value that I intend to perpetuate. And I wanted, I let Mr. Stokes know that I would no longer pursue that line of justification from my point of view. So I particularly, it was at a Planning Commission hearing. I particularly want to apologize to the Planning Commissioners as well. And as I told Mr. Stokes in our private communications, I will strive to do better. And I thank you, Mr. Stokes, for pointing that out. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Max.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we are going to move into Judy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have us move the Treasurers' Report to the next meeting.
Not a problem.
Okay. No old business, report out on the retreats. We decided on you know, priorities for our P U D meetings as well as talked about our commissions and we will likely have another retreat to start digging more into our two thousand and twenty-two goals. Managers' Report, I'm going to suggest that if anyone has questions for Hostway, please ask those. Otherwise, yes.
Brian, I just want to, I have a lot of things to report on, but if there's one thing that I want to get out is an exciting topic, and that's the bio solids topic. We're ready to come back to council for a resolution to buy the sludge press machine. And so I wanted to, wanted to present on that, but I'll include it in the next pack, and I would like to include the resolution if council is in favor of that, because the sludge presser has saved us money. And we think it's an effective tool. It's a good investment. We'll recover our investment in the sludge plus and, sorry, sludge presser in three years' time. And then we'll start saving money on its usage, and we expect it to last us over ten years. So I would like to bring that resolution to council for us to buy the current presser that we're using.
Okay. Any questions for Hostway?
I'll just make a comment. I never thought I could be excited about bio solids, but now I am.
See? And I think I've heard that Carmen's kind of excited about them too, right?
Sledge press.
All right. Okay, anything else? Johnny's got his hand up.
Hey, I sent a message, but I did check on pickleball lining for the gym. And it's going to cost about another sixteen to eighteen hundred dollars just to put down the striping. And that is not in my budget. So I want to let you guys know they are not willing to help out unless they can get exclusive rights to the pickleball courts, and we don't have the money to restripe the for soccer and other sports. So I would like to proceed with what I already have under contract.
Okay, yeah, thanks for following up on that. And I think that that makes sense. So and it does kind of highlight that we've, you know, several years ago established that the village wants to work with our local groups, whether it's the, you know, softball, baseball, whether it's working with the riding center, working with John Bryan Community Pottery. But it's important to, you know, have that, you know, equal contribution on those activities. Okay, so boards and commissions, we're still new into the year, but were there any things that anyone wanted to highlight? Yes, Lisa.
I have a couple of things. First, well, three, and I'll be quick. The first thing is that I want to thank Matthew Kirk for his service on Planning Commission as an alternate. He has submitted his resignation. And you also saw the correspondence from Sarah Sinclair Hammond in the earlier part of the meeting. So I'm now on Planning Commission, so that's why I'm giving that update. Second of all, from Art and Culture Commission, you know, I mean, I think we should, we could also be called like the Banner, the Banner Commission, because, you know, we're really active with that. But we had a suggestion from the art, sorry, I'm not going to call them art and culture. The PAC, Public Art and Culture Commission, that we have some significant decisions that are going to be coming from the Supreme Court around women's reproductive rights. And the PAC wanted to work on developing a banner that could potentially be up in the April-May timeline related to reproductive rights. And I wanted to run that by the council to see how you felt about that. If you supported that, we could come up with some kind of a visual for you to react to. I see a thumb up.
Absolutely. Yeah, it sounds great.
Okay.
Lisa, I don't remember when Earth Day is. It's sometime in April, I think. And I know that the Environmental Commission and the whole Habitat team, you know, if it comes to interest, were planning a big Earth Day celebration. And so I would want to be able to probably put up the Habitat banner for some period of time during that period. I mean, I'm sure we can work it out, but.
Okay, and we are very committed to keeping the B L M banner up all the time somewhere. So Hostway, maybe you can help me advise on the, you always are helpful, you and Johnny with the traffic direction of banner art. So, okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll write it up. I had shared a timeline with with Lisa that month of May and June is going to be busy because we'll have by month. We'll put it in writing and send it to you all so that we can fine tune it.
All right, I'll follow up with that. Then also, gee, I kind of feel like I don't even have to talk too much about the memo I put forward about the CRB since John Fee presented it. But I do want to talk about that in more detail at the next, at the next meeting. In particular, the reason, I am disappointed that I don't feel that we received the legal review that I thought we were getting with our money. Because in particular, one of the pillars of that proposal is community members are on equal stature with village council and the police chief in regard to discipline for violation of police duty. And I think we need to understand how that, how that fits into what we can and can't do. So you see my proposed next step. I'd like to talk about this at the next meeting, particularly the development of a CRB Chair Coordinator position and getting a position description for that. And, and I'm not going to do this alone. So I'm hoping that there's someone else on this council that will work with me on this and that we can add it to a future agenda.
Me, me, I mean, I'm sorry. And then I didn't respond to an email, but, but fully intended to, me.
Great.
All right, Carmen, let you and I talk before the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Kevin, did you have something?
Yes, at our retreat, Carmen and I were tasked to look at the Human Relations Commission and the Justice System Collaborative Commission and look for a possible way forward with those two entities. And I will tell the world, it was Brian House's idea, and I support that to consider naming this commission, the Social Justice Commission. We can play with the names, but I like the idea. And I think that phrase, social justice encompasses certainly the things that Human Relations Commission started out doing and the things that the Justice System Collaborative Commission was expected to do. So I would like to propose, at least informally at this point, and certainly have discussion about it when we move forward with the board and commissions, that again, we combine those two efforts. Develop, if you will, the Social Justice Commission and Carmen Brown would be primary liaison, and I would be secondary.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll mention something quickly. So the school board appointed a liaison with council, and so they would like us to reciprocate. This is something that we had had in the past. And, and I think, thought maybe the Y S D C would fulfill that role. But there seem to be a lot of things going on with the schools that are relevant to the village and vice versa. So we don't have to decide who that person is tonight. But I would say if anyone has interest to let Judy know, and then we can fill that position. Unless there's any reason that folks think we would not do that. So. Okay. So then let's go ahead and quickly talk about future agenda items and adjourned. So I heard a few things come up. Anything else that, well, Judy, you usually like to say what you've heard, and then we'll see if there's anything missing.
I just had added to our current list the resolution for purchase of a sludge press, and I did put down CRB proposal for the next meeting. And obviously, we can clarify with Lisa exactly what she wants to present there. And that's, that's what I've got.
And I guess I'll just ask Judy and Brian, I'm just asking regarding the hopefully newly named Social Justice Commission, I mean, what, what are the next steps with regard to that?
I can, I can draft an ordinance to get those two committees, boards, commission, whatever you want to call them, merged.
Actually, I would like to talk to you about it because if the tenants of the currently in existence, Justice System Commission or whatever the heck it was that was approved that never was enacted, if those tenants fit properly, that can just be renamed, but.
Yeah, and that, and that was the Justice System Commission. So, yeah.
Yeah, so we can, we can talk about that, I guess, Kevin and Carmen, to see if in fact that fits with your notion. Otherwise, yes, a new commission would need to be passed by ordinance.
Yeah, well, so, yeah, I'm good with. Yeah. Well, so, yeah, I'm good with whatever makes sense. And quite honestly, if it's, you know, if it's not cheating, you know, just rename an existing one. But I guess, why don't we just draft something to bounce around amongst ourselves or, or some proposal, and then we can go from there.
I'll send you out both HRC ordinance and the Justice System Commission ordinance, and we can start there.
Great, thank you.
So Mary Ann, would we be able to move the Environmental Commission report to the February 21st meeting?
Yes, I, I was going to ask that we do that. Catherine Zimmerman would be giving it, and she's going to be out of town. It, it would be a better time for us. And I also wanted to say that I do want to get the Active Transportation Commission started. I, I'll contact Judy about that and legislation, but I, that I do want to start working on getting that together.
Yeah, we've already got the legislation. We've got a, a bunch of folks that have expressed interest, and Judy should have their name. So. And then I guess I would also say with the Citizen Review Board, I would just caution folks that it's going to be hard to probably give a lot, the appropriate attention to other items, given the second read of the PUD. So just keep that in mind. But I understand that, you know, we've got things we want to move forward, but. Okay, anything else? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second move.
Wow, somebody already seconded. Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Thanks, everyone. Great discussion.
Thank you. Good night.
Take care.